Clark will read the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yep.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Marchese.
Yep.
Counselor Matusky.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Here.
President Napolitano.
Here.
Ten members present. You have a call, Mr. President.
Okay, we've already... Mr. President, could we stand for a moment of silence in honor of Marilyn Fayer, former counselors Steven and Bob Fayer's mother, who passed away this week?
Okay, before we open the public hearings, I just want to inform the public, I need to recuse myself from items one, two, and three. I'm an employer Comcast, my full-time job, it would be not appropriate for me to be up here. I'm going to ask Counsel McLaughlin to take the chair.
Ask Clark Canelo to read item number one, please.
Item number one, Mr. Chairman. Is an order offered by Counsel Peter A. Napolitano as president to all parties interested in the public hearing for Comcast of Massachusetts New Hampshire LLC for proposed conduit installation at 214 Broadway?
Petition is present? Public first? Second, second, yep.
Okay, make a motion to open up public participation. On my, I'm number one. Public hearing, excuse me, sorry, public hearing, on I'm number one. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Ayes, ahsa. Before you.
We look for representative, I believe.
No, we have to have, ask the public who's in...
That's what I, that's what I, okay. So I'm going to ask if anyone is here on item number one from Comcast.
You can do, you can do that. Yeah, you can do that. We opened it at the, you know.
Right, invite up the petitioner, for number one. Good evening, gentlemen. Could you just...
Dave Falwell in Comcast.
Could you just hit the mics, please, so the public can hear you?
That one slides up in the back of it.
Thank you. Sorry. Dave Falwell in Comcast.
Bill Conway, access engineering.
Great. Thank you for appearing. Could you just give us a quick, brief overview of the proposed item?
Yep, I'm going to let Bill do the overview. He did all the engineering plans for us, so I'm going to let Bill speak to that, and I'll answer any questions you may have after. So actually, item number one and three kind of go together as the same job. So...
I'm sorry, could we take item number three off the...
No, it's probably hearing.
No, you can't do that.
Or you want to just do with number one, and then I can backtrack to number three when we get to that?
Okay.
So Comcast has an existing two-by-two vault on the corner of the apartment building there, by Bartlett Street and Broadway. They're proposing to replace that vault with a three-by-three or three-by-five in that mulch area, and then trench northeasterly 22 feet to an existing Verizon manhole. And then we have a Verizon license going down Broadway to Honda Cars, which is petition number three.
So public comment is open, so I'm going to ask... Okay. I apologize. I'm going to open up for questions from the members to the petition. Counselor Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When is this project going to start, if you get the permits from us?
Soon as possible.
ASAP?
Yes.
And how long is it going to take?
Should be pretty quick. It's only maybe a couple of days, a week at the very most, weather permitting.
Two to seven days, okay. And you will be going in the street?
Yes.
Going across Broadway?
No, right along the curb.
Along, on the, on the street, though?
Correct.
Okay, police detail?
Yes, yes.
Okay. When you're finished with the job, if I may continue, when you're finished with the job, what condition are you going to leave the street in?
It'll be per the requirements of the street opening permit, permanent restoration, whatever's dictated in that street opening permit.
Okay.
I'm sure there's a, you know, a line item, we'll just go through the entire line item, whatever it is, we'll follow that, we'll meet that.
Do you, I'm asking this for a reason, but do you guarantee your work, whoever's going to be doing the work, while to resurface the street?
Resurface the patch in the road, yes, correct.
So it'll be like it was when you, when you started? Okay.
Permanent patch, yeah.
Okay.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to our guests. So it's two to seven days, depending on what happens. What hours are you looking to operate this? Because as, I don't know how familiar you are with this area, traffic is horrific during the hours of normal business. Is this something that you can do overnight?
We can, yes.
Okay, that'd be our preference?
Yes, not a problem.
All right, thank you. No other questions?
Counselor DeFlorio?
That was my question, the hours of operation, so thank you.
And Counsel McKinnon?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the invited guest. How many police are you going to have on the detail down there?
I would say we'd have two, anyway, minimum of two.
You're going to need them, because that, that's a high traffic flow down there. And what's the purpose of this, anyway? Why is this being done?
This is, again, coincides with petition number three, is to provide service to Honda Cars of Boston, Honda dealership.
So it's going to Honda?
So instead of digging the whole distance of the street, we have the license to go through the Verizon manhole system to avoid a lengthy excavation.
Okay. And the, and I want to reiterate what our good councilman over here had just stated, Mr. Hanlon, the condition of the road, when it goes and actually is dug up, needs to be replaced and repaired the same way, so that we don't have no sinking holes, no potholes, no, anything like that. Because there's been, there's been some work that's been done in the city, and the city's paying for it now, because it's done shoddy when they replace the street, so we don't want to see that anymore.
Understood.
Thank you.
Counsel Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the same concerns as Counsel McKinnon. We have utilities, I don't know how much underground work, I thought it was mostly on poles.
They're ripping it back, they go across, and then when they do the...
This is, do you do underground work for Comcast?
We do, but this is specific, we do aerial work also.
Okay, so...
It comes out like shit.
I have the same concerns, Mr. President, and I just want to let Comcast know that there's a lot of utility companies coming into our city, taking advantage of our good nature on the city council, and they're not properly, now, lower Broadway will be repaired with the casino work and all the work that's being done down there, but we want you people in the future to take notice, because I am inspecting personally any license that we grant out of here, the national grid, or whoever it may be, if the sidewalk or the street is not correctly repaired after the work is done. I'm not voting for any companies anymore. That's a new policy that I'm going to kick in. And as Counsel McKinnon stated, we do require police details on our work. Safety is a very, very big deal here, and the traffic is going to be quite heavy at that area. It's right after the rotary. There is a gentleman here that lives in the condominium, right in the back, I don't know if he's going to speak, because it is a public hearing, but on his behalf, he'd like to see, you know, the work being done as fast as possible, and not to avoid, you know, there's people that live there at this point, so we want to take that consideration. Thank you.
So we are specing, the conduit installation will be concrete encased, so any settlement there would be to a minimum. So with the amount of traffic at that location, it will be encased in concrete, so there shouldn't be any settlement at all.
Counsel Hanlon on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one other question that came up while the gentleman were talking. You're talking about Mystic Street and Broadway, but I'm looking at the places where you're putting in the installation, at 214, 100, and 128 Broadway, those are the addresses that you put down here. Those are on the right-hand side of the street, but Mystic Street's on the other side.
Mystic, that is, that is a separate petition? That's petition number two? On your agenda, that is an entirely separate?
Okay, all right, so we're talking just one and three, so...
So there's 214, and then 100 and 128.
It's all on the right-hand side?
Correct.
And it's going to what company, did you say?
To the Honda dealership?
Oh, Honda, okay. Okay, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Seeing no further questions, excuse our invited guests, customary thanks. Second motion. I'm going to excuse customary thanks, and...
Yeah, but just in case there's anyone that wants to speak, we don't want them sitting there.
Okay. We've already, we've already opened public comments, so I'm going to ask three times anyone in favor, and then I'll do three times anyone opposed. Anyone in favor of item number one, petition from Comcast? Just if you could come up and state your name.
Rob Giacchino, Honda Cars of Boston. I know that's going to be item number three, but it's all in conjunction, so we've done without, oh. Sorry. It's on. Rob Giacchino, Honda Cars of Boston. We're in favor of this, so we can get underground utilities, internet on our side of the street. We've suffered long enough without it, so that's why we're in favor, and it's not going to disrupt anything, there's construction going along in the street anyway, so it's a perfect time to do it.
For the second time, anyone in favor? Now, that's the third time, anyone in favor of item number one? Seeing nobody else, close that portion of the public hearing, and I'll ask three times if anyone is opposed to item number one. Anyone in the audience opposed to item number one? Anyone opposed to item number one? Anyone opposed to item number one? I closed that portion of the public hearing. Item was before.
Favorable action?
Favorable action on the order?
Before we do it, you'd have to close the public hearing, we didn't do that, and then, and then we can make a motion, please.
So moved? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. Matter before you?
Favorable action on the order?
Favorable actions with the conditions that we stated?
Yeah.
The, the police details, the work at night, and to, to, two to seven days, and then replace, refurbish the, the street the same way that it was taken up. Favorable action with the, with the conditions.
Number seven, I'm going to read the roll. Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marchese?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel, Chairman McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
That would be nine ayes, zero nays, Mr. Chairman.
Nine ayes, zero nays, the pass, the item has passed before us. Ask clerk to read item number two.
Item number two, Mr. Chairman, is an order offered by Counsel Peter A. Napolitano as president, to all parties interested, that permission be and hereby is granted to Comcast of Massachusetts New Hampshire LLC to lay and maintain underground conduits and manholes on Mystic Street and Broadway.
Do we have any petitioners here for the item? So moved, ask petitioners to come forward for item number two? Again, thank you for coming. If you could just state your name for the record, and your reasoning for asking for this petition this evening.
Dave Falwell in Comcast. Bill Conway, access engineering.
Great, if you could just give us a brief description of the proposal?
Sure. We are proposing to place one three-by-five Comcast vault, three feet away from existing utility pole, 3155 on Mystic Street, then trenching approximately 300 feet northwesterly on Mystic Street, placing a second three-by-five Comcast vault, where Mystic Bow and Broadway meets, then trenching approximately 214 feet southerly, placing a third three-by-five Comcast vault, and then trenching approximately 80 feet westerly, and stubbing at the property line for future loose, future use on Horizon Way for the casino.
Make a motion before, before you, and Counsel McKinnon, on the motion. Counsel McKinnon?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the invited guests. So the purpose of this is to have this for the casino?
Yes, correct.
Okay. The resort?
Resort.
Casino resort? Thanks, John. You're a good correcter, I like that. All right, and the, the same stipulations would apply to this as well? At night, police details, same thing, so, and then the outlay replaced with the same conditions that it was dug up in?
Correct. This would probably take, I would say, probably 14 days.
This is going to be a little better?
This is a lot longer. The majority of it, the lengthy portion is on Mystic Street, so I don't think we'd be interrupting as much traffic.
Okay. Well, that's, it, once again, it's still like high congestion down there, too, so you may want to still have the same amount of police detail there as well. Would you agree with that?
Yes. Yes, I was just referring to the amount of time.
Sure, no, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Now, you said this is going to be approximately 14 days, so two weeks. If we have any rain or anything, does that stop you from doing the work, or do you continue to do the work?
Depends on how hard the rain is. I mean, ideally, we, they wouldn't send a crew down there, but when they do do the excavating, they'll put in X amount of feet per day, it'll all be backfilled, so there'll be no exposed trench or any, you know, anything along that line, and then they come back the next day, or whenever the rain stopped, and then start to work again.
Well, I just want the people to understand that if it rains for three or four days, you're going to be there an extra three or four days, so they don't hold you responsible for 14 days.
Correct.
So this is the reason why I ask, because some things can be done in the rain, and some things can't.
Yes.
So that was the reason why I asked that question. And so this is going to be like, like Counsel McKinnon said, it's going to be done at night?
Correct.
So no interruption with traffic during the morning.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I heard three vaults? Is that what you're looking to do?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and how far along on Mystic are they going to be?
So the first one on Mystic would be right at the utility pole, it's about 300 feet from Broadway. Then the second one would be right on Broadway at Mystic, and then the third one would be basically on Broadway in front of Horizon Way.
Okay, all right. I just want to double check on that. In the future, I would, I know it's, visual's always easier than audio, so if you could bring copies of schematics, I think that my colleagues would appreciate that, because they could look at it, see exactly where the layout's going to be. It might help things move a little bit easier on both ends.
Sure, I can leave this with you as well, and you can have...
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Seeing no further questions, I'll excuse our guests, customary thanks, but I believe you can stay for item number three. Make a motion that we open up public, public comment on this item. Public hearing, excuse me, public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now open, I'm going to ask three times anyone in favor, and three times anyone against. Anyone in favor of item number two? Anyone in favor of item number two? Anyone in favor of item number two? Seeing no speakers, I'll close that portion of the hearing, now, anyone opposed to item number two? Anyone opposed to item number two? Anyone opposed to item number two? Seeing none, I will make the motion...
Make the motion to close public hearing, and favorable action on the order?
With the conditions and the 14 days that they need.
Let's just, let's just close the first, sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Close the public hearing.
Second on that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Now...
Favor with the conditions and the 14 days. Second motion.
All those in favor?
No.
Aye.
Sorry, roll call, that's right. Roll call vote.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marchese?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Chairman McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
We have nine ayes, zero nays, Mr. Chairman. You have passed the order.
Two has passed, and ask the clerk if he'll read item number three.
Item number three, Mr. Chairman, is an order offered by Counsel Peter A. Napolitano as president, to all parties interested in the public hearing for Comcast of Massachusetts New Hampshire LLC, a company incorporated for the distribution of telecommunications services, that it desires to construct a line for such telecommunications under the public way or ways at 100 and 128 Broadway.
Counsel Hanlon?
Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion that we waive the portion of the hearing where we have the petition as present, because I have already explained it to us when they were talking about that one, and go right into the portion of the meeting where we ask the public for their favor.
I advise against that. I do understand that they said it's a similar piece, it isn't the same location, it is far enough apart, and I posted it for a public hearing, so I do not feel comfortable with you not having the public hearing.
Counsel...
That's okay.
Counsel Capone on the motion?
You can do that, yeah.
So those in favor of waiving the public hearing?
Opening public hearing.
Excuse me, of opening public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so three times, anyone in the audience in favor of item number three? Anyone in favor of item number three? If you could come back up and just state your name for the record?
Rob Giacchino, Honda Cars of Boston, I'm in favor of item number three.
And last time, anyone in favor of item number three? Seeing no other speakers, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Anyone opposed to item number three? Anyone opposed to item number three? Anyone opposed to item number three? Seeing no speakers, I'll make a motion, close that portion of the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion, second, to close the public hearing.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Matters before?
Favorable action on the order with the same conditions as...
Item number one.
As item number one.
See in a second, all those in favor?
Mr. President, it's an order.
Roll call vote?
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marchese?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Chairman McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
That is nine ayes, zero nays, Mr. Chairman, you have passed the order.
Item number three is...
Make a motion to open public participation?
Second the motion?
Second the motion? Make a mo...
The motion is to open public participation.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's all right.
Open up public participation? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
You're welcome, thank you.
I don't have anybody on the sign-in sheet for public participation, Mr. Chairman.
Senator would like to speak.
But I believe the senator, well, anybody could speak.
All right, so we're going to open it up to public participation. If anyone who has not signed in, who would like to speak? Senator D'Amico, she wants to speak?
Three minutes.
Two minutes per.
Yeah. No exceptions. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Mr. President, members of the city council, I wanted to come before you tonight to give you some information that will be made public middle of this week, as to with the school funding, and a lot of the issues that we talked about when I appeared here last time, about we had a plan in place to fix the formula going forward, if all parties agreed to have it in the Senate budget, and I'm happy to report tonight that in the Senate budget, we have a permanent fix for the school funding issues that we have had the last three years. And that fix is simply what we stated last time, was to use the free-reduced lunch forms as a criteria in addition to what is being used today. So basically, whatever formula works best for a community, they can use. The old formula, which is whatever it benefits more with, or the new formula, which is what has been put in the last several years' budgets. So starting in 2020, the city of Everett will be going back to the old formula if the Senate language prevails in the final budget, which means that the House has to agree to it, and the governor has to sign it. Now, traditionally, the governor will, will sign whatever the conference committee comes out with, the House and the Senate, so we have to make sure that the House agrees with us on this, this major policy shift that we will be using to benefit the city of Everett. So that, that's big news, that solves the problem, that will allow us to go forward and not have this, you know, longstanding deficit that we've had the last few years with this hole in the budget, because we were not treated fairly by the formula, the city of Everett was not. So this will, will be a clean slate, we'll have a true number for all of our local, low-income children that are in our school department, that number will be reflected down to the actual student in our, in our schools. So no more of this false number that comes out of the count, we'll have a real number. That's one thing. Second thing is, in the Senate budget, we also have some changes with charter school reimbursement. Now, this is for this year's budget going, this is for 2019 budget. The charter school reimbursement, which is a big hole in this community, because a lot of our kids go to the charter schools, and we have to reimburse those schools for the students leaving our public school system, the Senate has put an additional $20 million in that line item, which will filter down to the city of Everett, and we will, between that and the special ed circuit breaker, which is for kids who are trans, the transportation out of our city for services, we've added another $37 million into that line item. So between those two line items, the city of Everett will see an additional increase between $300,000 to $400,000. between three to $400,000 for that line, those two line items. And I'm also happy to report that the Senate budget, we put another fix in this year's budget, which will, if, again, if it's adopted through the House and the governor signs it, we will receive an additional about $2 million over last year's number in the city budget on chapter seventy. So, and I'm here to say two things on that. One, we're happy that it's in the Senate budget. We have to fight for it to get it through the House and to have the governor sign it. But I know the mayor's been very generous with his, with the amount that he wants to give to the schools this year, the six and a half million dollars. So that is, this is totally independent of that. So I don't want anyone to think that we can get this and not do that. That is false because at this point in time, we have to work through the process. You will finish your budget before we will finish ours. So we want to make sure that we are in good standing across the board. So I would recommend, obviously, to take the mayor's offer of the six and a half million dollars and then see how we can do this going forward. So there's a lot riding on this. There's a lot of moving parts. But there will be press coming out on this this week, and I wanted to fully explain it to all of you to make sure that we didn't pick one or the other. We want, you know, we want to make sure that this is all happening across the board. So it's important to know that there's fixes happening this year, and then we have a long-term fix coming out of the Senate budget. So we were able to do both of them in this year's budget, cover short term or long term. FY nineteen will be the sped circuit breaker, and it will be the charter school reimbursement piece and additional funding for chapter seventy for our schools. FY twenty will be, will be the permanent fix, which will have us revert back to the free reduced lunch forms, which Everett School Department is, I would say, one of the best in the state of collecting those forms. And that's why we're hurt so much with the new change because they had a real number for every child. So those children were not being accounted for with the new formula. And now with this fix, they will be, will have every person that should be where they should be. So it's an important fix for us, for our, sixteen communities across the state are going to benefit from it, and two happen to be Chelsea and Everett, two of my communities that we've been working hard for. So that's the update. I just want to give that to you. Everything is fluid right now. The Senate budget was just put out last week. We will be voting on it before Memorial Day. But these fixes I'm talking to you about are already baked in the budget. There's no amendment process on these issues. This is already in our budget. There's no fighting it for, you know, to keep it in there. The Senate will pass it the last, probably Thursday before Memorial Day. And then the Senate and the House will come together with a conference committee made up of three members of each branch, and they will reconcile any differences. Now, it's important to note that we went, we have, the House has to agree with the Senate and Senate has to agree with the House on not just this issue, but many issues. I used to be on the conference committee, so we had, it was a good opportunity, but I was moved to a different role in the Senate, a better role. But in this process, we will have the Chair Ways and Means, the Vice Chair Ways and Means, which is Joan Lovely from puberty, and Vinnie DiMistato from Plymouth. So that's the Senate team, and then the House will appoint their members as well. So it's, you know, nothing is set in stone at this point, but it's exciting news because we now have a shot at getting things fixed, short term or long term.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last time, anyone to come up for public participation?
Make a motion.
I'll take a motion to.
Close public participation.
Have a motion to close public participation and second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, could we please take items ten, eleven, and twelve collectively?
We have a motion to take items number ten, eleven, and twelve collectively. Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read the items.
Item number ten is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as President in order to transfer $50,000 from budgetary fund balance into the Treasury Collector's other charge account for larger-than-expected expenditures on credit card fees and the parking sticker program through City Hall systems. Item number eleven is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as President that $700,000 be and is hereby appropriated to finance the construction, remodeling, improvement, alteration, reconstruction, or making of extraordinary repairs to Everett High School. Item number twelve is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as President to transfer $849,615 from the budgetary fund balance to salaries account.
Could please invite Counselor DeFlorio. Mr. Demus up.
Give a second.
Eleven and twelve.
All in favor? Aye. Ayes have it. Good evening, Ms. Demus. State your name for the record.
Good evening. Eric Demus, CFO.
Mr. Demus, in regards to the $50,000 from the budgetary fund balance, that's in regards to the credit cards and sticker program. In regards to the credit cards or anything that's paid online, is there any way you could check in to see if you could get people charged for that? Because I know a lot of cities and towns are charging like a dollar if you do anything online.
Yes, absolutely. And that's something that we're actually working on. When this issue has been posed to previous city councilors or previous city councils, there wasn't an appetite to implement a fee because the goal was to try to get people to stop coming to City Hall as much and be able to provide a better service, provide that online service so that they could conduct city business at their convenience. However, it's time for us to revisit that, and we're in the process of developing a proposal to submit to City Council to start implementing some type of fee. It can either be a fixed fee or it can be a percentage-based fee, such as anywhere from three to five percent. But right now, the city is actually being charged anywhere from three to five percent on all of those credit card transactions and bearing the cost themselves, we're bearing the cost ourselves.
This $50,000.
That's not being passed on at this point.
Right. But this $50,000 is basically mostly from credit cards. When you're saying the sticker program through the City Hall system, what is that, what do you mean by that?
Well, it's an online program for residents to actually go ahead and purchase, purchase parking permits. And again, there's a fee associated. Right now, there is no provision or ordinance that allows us to charge a fee. We need to put that before City Council.
So basically, this $50,000, is my question, is all due to fees?
It is.
Due to credit card fees?
We've seen a significant increase in online transactions. We're also in the process of updating, and actually, we submitted a grant for a complete redesign of the city's website because our goal is to try to provide better services, more online services. The younger people, they'd like to really try to do everything from their phone. And before we actually go ahead and move forward with this expansion, it's certainly an issue that City Council needs to revisit as to whether or not they want to simply include it within the annual operating budget or if this is a new fee that you're willing to authorize that we would pass on to the consumers as part of our expansion of services.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I also have a question on number eleven. Should we just do one at a time?
Just wait one item at a time.
Okay. So I'm all set with that. Thank you.
Counselor McLaughlin. Okay. So again, we're on item number ten. Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest. With the $50,000, I know this is from fees. Do we have an exact number or is it like ballpark?
This is what the Treasury is estimating that it will cost us to get through the remainder of this year. We budgeted 105, and I believe that to date, we've spent approximately 113.
Okay.
So we think that this additional 50 will make up for the difference between the 105 and the 113 and get us through the remainder of the year.
Okay. And is this exclusively because of credit card fees, online transactions? Or is there anything additional in here?
There are additional items in there, such as bank charges. All of our financial charges with any institutions are included in there. I will tell you, though, that the mayor did put out banking services under an RFP this year. I went back and took a look and did some investigating in the city. I can't tell when the last time the city ever did that. So we actually did issue that RFP this year, and it worked out very favorable, favorably for the city. Because had we not received such a positive bid results, the number that we would be asking for is more. We actually were able to save the city a significant amount of money in additional bank charges. Just as one example, we were paying for armored car service before. That's one of the services that is now included as part of the RFP that we're no longer paying for, so.
Okay. So the 50 that we have here, everything is transactional, anything dealing with any sort of a charge to the city for doing any kind of online service?
Yes.
Okay. I agree. I mean, we want to make things convenient for folks. We don't want to burden folks. But if there's going to be an additional charge to do an online transaction to the city, it should be absorbed by the person who's looking for the convenience as opposed to the balance of the tax base. So, all right. I don't have any other questions.
Before you do that, before you do that, the President.
So I'm just going to say that this, I consider this a routine item, and I hear a motion to suspend item number thirteen. Second, all in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. We have motion for favorable action. Clerk will read the roll.
One moment, Mr. President. Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio. Counselor DePero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
This is on item ten?
This is on item ten, Counselor.
Yes, I, yep.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano. You have ten ayes, zero nays, Mr. President. Pass the order.
Pass the order. On item number eleven, Counselor McLaughlin on the item?
We have to read it first.
I've read all three. They've all been read.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just have two quick questions for Mr. Demus. Can you just explain this $700,000 for work at the Everett High School? Is it already work that has previously been done or work that is going to be done in the coming?
No work has been done. This is the expansion of the vocational program at the high school that the mayor was talking about a few weeks ago that was presented to City Council. So this is the authorization that was referred to at that previous meeting. As soon as this is actually passed, then plans will be started. And I believe they're not going to start this work until school is out at the high school until over the summertime.
So this is summer work that will be done? This is to create the vocational space that was discussed at the last meeting?
Yes.
The extraordinary repairs is to create the classrooms they were talking about, knocking a wall down and expanding in other classes? That, that's that work that they were talking about?
It is, and it's language that was approved by bond counsel that recommended be, the language revised to include this specific language in the bond order.
Okay. My last question is, does this hurt our bond or our rating possibilities going forward? You talked tonight about how great we're doing, but are these types of transfers possible to hurt us down the road?
Well, this actually isn't a transfer. If it was a transfer, I would be raising some concerns that we were spending existing surplus to fund operations. But this is actually a capital improvement, and it's actually a bonded order.
Okay. I'm fully in support of it. I just wanted to know, I didn't realize it was for that work, and I just wanted to know if it would hurt us. But if it's a capital improvement, then fully in support of it. Thank you, Mr. Demus.
Just want to suspend rule thirteen up front.
Yep.
Have a motion to suspend rule thirteen.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. Eric, is this, I know this is coming from the capital improvement, but does this have to go out to bid? How's it going to work? Who's going to do the work?
Regardless of whether or not any of our appropriations are going to be within a capital improvement plan, it is capital work and it is subject to state procurement laws. So all of this work will be required to go out to bid.
Okay. And so obviously, how did we come up with the $700,000 figure?
That was the estimate that was provided by the school department, and I believe they were utilizing one of their consultants that helped them pull this number together.
Okay. So once this goes out to bid, we'll have an actual price. This isn't, this price isn't, may be accurate, may not be accurate.
This is the price that they believe that it, that is going to take to accomplish the goal. This is the only amount that will be allowed to be spent underneath this bond order. Certainly, when it goes out to bid, we'll certainly share those results with you. I would hope that based upon the scope of what, of the work that's going to be put out, it will come in under the $700,000. But like any appropriation, you're authorizing spending on this project up to the $700,000.
Does the city do the bid, puts it out to bid? The city puts it out to bid on the schools?
We do, yes.
The city does.
The city's procurement department handles all procurement-related issues.
Okay. So once that's settled, you will come in front of us and let us know what the exact bid is?
We typically don't, but I would be more than happy to. And the other thing I just want to add is that given the fact that this is a bonding issue and that we most likely will not be going out to bond again for another year, if the bids come in at, say, $650,000, then when we actually issue the bonds, we would only issue $650,000 worth of bonds, and we would be back before council asking you to rescind the difference in those orders. I'm actually working.
Well, my other question is if there's any other work that has to be done, because when you're opening up walls, you never know what you're going to find. So I understand the construction business. So I understand it's a brand-new building, but, you know.
Please, no cross debate.
I want to make sure that it goes out to bid the correct way, that there's no surprises.
I can provide you with a hundred.
And we don't come back with a $100,000 in appropriation. So that's, that's why, what I'm saying.
I can provide you 100% certainty that it will be bid out properly in accordance with all applicable bid statutes.
All right, thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Counselor McKinnon?
Oh, absolutely.
Through you, Mr. President, to our invited guest. Mr. Demas, so if it was to go and exceed the $700,000, that would be it? That's all we're going to be giving is the $700,000? That's what?
The order that's in front of you is a $700,000 bonding order, yes.
And they would have to come back separately at some point if they needed it for additional funding?
They would, or I wouldn't authorize or execute the contract-
Okay.
-without identifying the funding source.
And also, this, this $700,000, this, this is actually going to be a moneymaker? That's what was discussed before with the school committee here, actually, the school department here. And they said that this will recoup, they'll be able to recoup funds and actually generate funding for the city at some point with the, the type of children that they're gonna be having come in here, correct?
Higher tuition rates, yes.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Counselor DePiero?
Thank you. Mr. Demas, the $700,000, is that solely for work in construction? Or is that including any consulting fees that you mentioned or anything above the construction itself?
It would have to be tied to the project itself. Anytime you have a construction project dealing with public buildings, you're dealing with a couple of different procurement statutes. So it would include any work from any consultants, designers, architects, that are directly involved with the capital-related portion of the project.
Do you happen to have an estimate of that end of the expenditure?
I did not receive detail of the $700,000 estimate that the school department had submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Capone? Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest, kind of following on the lines of my colleague. I, I remember the presentation and the $700,000 figure it was given. Did that also include salary? Because there were, there were gonna be one or two folks that they had to have in there that they were adding. And I thought that that fell into the cap of the 700 as well. Now, I don't know if the 700 number is the, the number that was used to incorporate that. So, I mean, if it, if it is, then clearly the construction cost should be coming in well below this because we've got salary, we do have consultant fees, things of that nature. But I'm not 100% sure if that 700 incorporated that or not. I didn't know if you could refresh my memory on that.
Sure. I can't refresh your memory in regards to the number of additional salaries, but what I can tell you is that they would have to be operating, charged to the operating budget. They could not be charged within this bond order. You can't charge municipal salaries to a bonded construction order.
Okay, so, so that, that clarifies that for me. So I'll have to just go back and take a look and see what it was, see if the 700 was exclusively construction cost? Because I, I think that night I asked if there were any other costs involved and then salaries came up. And I, I just can't remember at this point if salaries are in the 700 or if it's over and above. So I'll, I'll have to go back and look at that, so, thank you, I appreciate it. No other questions? Your pleasure? Motion for favorable action?
Mr. President?
No, I've already identified-
You said the item 10, now I have 11.
I do rule item number 11 and 12 as routine. We've already waived, you know, suspended item 13?
Second the motion?
We have motion for favorable action, second it. Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Marchese?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
That would be 10 ayes, 0 nays, Mr. President.
So you have passed the order? Item number 12? Suspend rule 13?
Second.
The motion to suspend item, rule 13, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Counselor McGlaughlin on the item?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you to Mr. Demas, our invited guest. Could you just explain to me quickly salaries account? What is, what are we doing? Is this?
Well, the letter that was attached to this, this is, these monies are for retroactive payments for both fiscal years 17 and 18 for both the patrolman's union, police patrolman's union, as well as the police superiors' union.
So does this bring us into line with a new contract?
This is the result of, the patrolman's contract was already executed. My understanding was, and before we actually had made the submission, that the superiors were taking a vote today at 4:00. But my understanding is that they did not take that vote. There's some language issues that they're working out that we expect to be resolved, but will have no impact financially.
So their decision will have no impact financially? So this $849,000 stands no matter what their vote?
As far as I'm concerned, it does. I haven't actually met with them. I, my understanding was that it was language in the contract from a scheduling issue. My understanding was there, there were no concerns with any of the financial aspects of the contract. Certainly, if there are, and it's gonna require a change in the appropriation, I would be back before council.
So would this be more proven to lay this on the table for the next meeting and wait for that decision to come down or that vote to occur before we vote on this and then we have to come back before us?
I would defer that decision to City Council.
Okay, I'm gonna yell the floor to my colleagues.
Counselor DePiero?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would think that if they did have an issue with the funding, the numbers certainly wouldn't go down. So I don't see an issue with proceeding favorably. And if there is an issue with the funding, Mr. Demas will be back before us, but I don't foresee that happening.
Well, it's possible to go down. We're good negotiators as well.
I'd hope so.
Don't rule anything out.
Yeah. I'm good for favorable action.
Second motion? Okay, we have a motion for favorable action, second it. Excuse us for customary thanks.
Thank you.
Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Marchese?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
We have 9 ayes, 0 nays, Mr. President. You have passed the order. Four, eight, yeah, you have 10. I know that, so I count the nine.
Okay, Counselor DeFlorio, you still have the-
Yes, if we could please suspend the rules, take item 28.
We have motion, take item number 28. Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The committee meeting, we only had nine.
The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 28.
Item number 28, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilors John Leo McKinnon, Rosa DeFlorio, and Wayne A. Matuski to request Mr. John Tocco to give council a progress report on Encore Boston Harbor.
Mr. President? Counselor McKinnon?
Could we have Mr. Tocco before us so he could give us and provide the council with a presentation?
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Good evening, Mr. Tocco, would you state your name for the record, please?
You're good.
Push. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councilors, people of Everett. I'm John Tocco, the Executive Director of Government and Community Relations, speaking to you on behalf of the Encore Boston Harbor for the first time as Encore Boston Harbor. Excited to be here tonight. I think what I'll do is take a few moments to give you an update on the presentation. We'll have a full update briefing also on Thursday, 6:00 PM with the mayor and the mayor's office over at the Conley Center, open for the, to the public. So please come down and join us to learn more. And we'll open up to questions and I know there's a lot on your agendas tonight, so in fairness to you and your families, I'll try to be brief, but let me know if you want to stop or ask me anything along the way. Here's a rendering of our project. You've seen this 1,000 times before. You know, what's interesting now, as opposed to five years ago, this rendering is looking more and more like a reality. As you notice, the top of the tower, we've changed the, the lettering. It's now labeled the Encore Hotel, so all the letters have been ordered, the new glass has been ordered. It should be here shortly. Here's a shot from the tower. I'm sure most of you see this every day. We've topped off the building right now. What you'll see is some work on the structural steel that makes up that signature swoosh. But all floors are now structurally complete and we're progressing with the glass up the side of the tower and that should be done shortly. Inside, you'll see some of the carpeted ceilings. I know at the topping off ceremony a week or so, two weeks ago, several of you were out. What you can see is a lot of the millwork that's ongoing in the casino. It, it's quite amazing if you look, you know, a typical casino in a structure like this will be similar to what you see above you. A drop ceiling with foam tiles. And this is very intricate ornate millwork. It's very difficult to do. It's very extravagant and it's well, well on its way. Here's just one of the curved stairs which wraps around the center bar that's in the middle of the casino floor. Inside, you'll see some tiling. Believe it or not, this is the, some of the marble work that's ongoing in one of the public restroom areas. Here, work, we're very excited for, work has begun on the harbor walk. So this is the beginnings of what will be the harbor walk around the property. I think you'll see it's, it's much different than just a straight asphalt slab. I mean, it's, it's also some ornate brickwork and masonry work. The patterns are unbelievable and what's more impressive is when you're out there and standing on the harbor walk, you don't understand from the renderings, from the model, how big this really is. It's a 20-foot harbor walk. It's essentially the size of a two-lane street. And this is just for pedestrians and bicyclists and people to walk around and roam around the harbor. As you can see here, these are a number of trees. The, the landscaping work is well underway. You'll continue to see more and more of that continue along the harbor. You've also begun to see some work on the grading changes in front of the MBTA facility. We started planting some of the trees. Each one of these trees is the size of the Everett Christmas tree. And no, you can't cut one of them down next year. But, you know, it's quite, quite impressive. I think next time you're out, you'll see, we intend to get all of this done. Believe it or not, it's, it's such a lengthy process that we could not begin this next year and finish it in time for opening. So we need to finish it this construction season before winter. Transportation improvements, you know, it's no secret we're doing work all over the area, all over the city of Everett, at Wellington Circle, at Sullivan Square. Work's ongoing, it's progressing well. I won't say it's not difficult, it is. I know it's a challenge for us, I know it's a challenge for you. I'm sorry. All I can say is we're doing our best to mitigate the impacts and work appropriately. In addition to us, there's a number of other projects going on in the area, which we've begun to share as much information as we can on the impacts posed by those projects. And it's our hope and intention, we'd love to finish this work up, all of our roadway work by the winter. So, within this construction season. So that way we can get this, fight through the summer, fight through the fall, get this work behind us and we'll be on to opening. Here's just a brief shot of our timeline, which again shows you just what I mentioned before. Just an update on our construction workers. So far on the site, we've had 145 different workers from Everett making over $8 million in salaries and wages. I think that's a very strong representation from the community and at least in the folks that I talk to. Everyone seems to know somebody, whether it's in Everett or Charlestown or Medford or Malden, throughout our surrounding communities, somebody knows somebody, a family, a friend that's, that's been working on our site. And that's great to hear and that's what we intended to do. So throughout our host and surrounding communities, it's over $51 million in salaries and wages. It's, it's a very impressive number. Quick update on the jobs. Again, we'll go into more detail on Thursday, but we have over 4,000 careers in a number of different areas. Just a little bit about those careers, a lot of folks don't know how you progress with dealer, which will have a dealer school. We've worked in agreement out with Cambridge College. It's right over in the hood plant in Charlestown, right off of the Orange Line. These are unbelievable jobs. So you can have a high school degree, take a certificate course to learn how to be a dealer, and that's how you progress through the casino. These are not jobs that require college education. And as you can see, you can get to a very senior position just by starting as a entry-level dealer. Same with cooks. Our executive chef started as a cook too. And now he's the executive chef of the whole resort for Wind Boston Harbor, moved from Las Vegas to be with us here. But he started out as a cook too in the kitchen. Our president of Wind Boston Harbor, or sorry, Encore Boston Harbor's Bob DeSalvio, Bob started at the front desk in hospitality. So he's progressed through his career from the front desk to now president, opening a new property for Wind Resorts called Encore Boston Harbor. Recruitment timeline, we're doing some hiring now. I think we have about 20 job openings posted at the moment. The bulk of the hiring starts in April of next year. So that's when we'll have recruitment fairs, drives, you name it. Everything's gonna be going, all cylinders, moving towards bringing 4,000 new people online and getting everyone trained up. Web tools, we'll be announcing shortly. We'll have online, we're working through our job and talent network. We'll have the talent network, which is available now. So that's where people can sign up for updates, comb through the jobs. We're launching a new tool, which is called Skill Smart. And that's really a way that you can explore the different job opportunities, maybe jobs that aren't available yet, but you want to put in the skills that you have and see what you could be qualified for. You could navigate through the process that way. So we're really excited about that tool coming online. And of course, the windcareers.com website, which is what's operational now. You can go on, you can look at the jobs and you can apply directly online if you're comfortable doing it that way, too. Local career fairs, we'll have a number of those, we're working on a schedule, which I'll gladly report back to you. The Encore Career Centers, we have one that will be opening up in Everett. We just finished the space recently. So we hope to staff that by the 4th of July holiday, get that open the summer. It's gonna be right outside City Council Chambers in, I don't know what that room was, but we'll have some computer terminals up there, we'll have staff, we'll be able to share some information on the jobs and help folks get interested in the different positions. Local businesses that have participated on the construction, here's a sampling of those businesses, but so far, just on construction alone, over $31 million in contracts to Everett companies. Thank you, and I'd like to open it up for any questions?
Questions, Counselor DeFlorio?
Thank you for appearing, we appreciate you being here. We, I think you've answered all our questions and all the rumors that have been going around, so thank you for being here.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Marchese?
John, regarding the hiring, it looks like you hired 3,500 people a month before they opened up?
In, in April, starting in April.
And you still have a May 20th, May or June opening day?
Yep, we're still working towards the end of June.
Yep.
So, yeah, and that was not a change. So that's typical of our industry. So we start really the bulk hiring, of course, what we've been doing for the last few years and we'll continue to do more of is identification. So we'll continue to do outreach sessions, help folks. We're looking for folks to get some experience from here to there. So if you're watching this today, go out, if you want to work in a hotel, go get a job in a hotel, get some experience on your resume. And then it's going to be bring folks on board and we'll teach them the ways that we do things two or three weeks before we open, and then we'll open. So there will be a very busy hiring season. It's set up in sort of panel interviews, so there'll be large hiring events with on-the-spot hiring. So that's how we do it. And there'll be thousands of people coming through the room and the facilities for interviews on those days.
Just a quick question. Regarding, seeing when this gets built, this actually stretches the city of Everett, where we never had a, probably had a big presence of the police, fire department. Will there be anything there for those people? Will there be a, a substation, police station, fire station? Do you know what the plans even for the city to build either are?
Well, I think that would be a good question for the city. I can answer with respect to our facility. We have provided $5 million annually in mitigation, public safety mitigation funds. I think that's at the city's and your discretion to decide how that gets allocated. In addition, we will have a significant number, I'm sorry, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but security officers on site, well over 1,000 cameras within the building and around the building. We have a manned command response, both unit and center, where we can watch for events. We'll do regular, and we have already begun, regular trainings with the public safety, police, and fire here within the city of Everett. Those will continue and I'm sure we will accelerate those as we get closer and as we have a building to practice, practice in. And, you know, in addition to that, the state police will have a presence on property as well. And so I know the state police and us and the Everett Police Department are all working together to figure out the logistics of all those movements. But I think it's safe to say that the Encore Boston Harbor will be one of the worst places in the state to commit a crime.
And we'll just quick, one last, last question. The, the properties that are being absorbed by the corporation? I mean, I see they're almost down the Beecham Street. I mean, is there plans to go all the way? You know what I mean, is, I mean, is the highway going to get wider all the way down to the circle? Say the, the first circle, not going into Boston? I know it's-
Are you referring to the, this roadway work?
The roadway, yes.
Sure. There's an extensive widening effort that's underway.
So there'll be, there'll be probably purchasing most of the houses leading up to the other circle, heading towards Everett?
No. So what happens there? And this would be better to sit with you and I'd love to invite you to come down and look at a detailed plan and you can get really granular. But for all intents and purposes, there is some elbow room up and down the street. We have acquired a significant amount of property on both sides that provides a lot more elbow room. A lot of it is in front of our building. So what you'll see now is, you, you probably, if you've driven down Route 99, you've seen a lot of construction equipment in front of our construction scrim, which was moved back-
Yep.
-doing some work. That's road widening. So that eventually becomes part of Broadway and that becomes part of all the turning lanes. And we continue up the road, we've been working-
But after Malden, like Malden Autobahn, Malden Autobahn and the Beecham Street, that will be pushed back also? Will that be part of roads there also?
There is some-
Especially up to the other entrance, to McDonald's entrance there?
There's some widening, but most of the, the work is happening over towards the Honda cars side and not into the car, the side where the residents-
Because I just saw you started recessing in there, down there.
And one of the things that's happened is up that road, and this is not new information, we've shared it with residents in the area. What, what has been returned is a, there's a row of cars that, there's parking actually on Lower Broadway. And so what has been eliminated, a part of the plans, is the parking along Lower Broadway north of Malden Autobahn. So, which is essentially the width of a lane. Then there'll be additional medians that will be installed up and down Broadway to create the more boulevard atmosphere to commute, to complete the lush landscaping and that sort of-
And here's probably the biggest, so no matter how much landscaping is done, not landscaping, road widening or whatever, everything that goes in has to come out. So there's always gonna be a stop, a red, a stop sign somewhere, a red light. I mean, do you see a problem with that in the future? You know, because that, you know, you'll see 100 cars coming out of there.
Yeah, no. It's a great question and there's problems with that today. And it's actually, I think, one of the biggest positive impacts that we've had in this whole time is we've had the city of Everett-
Yep.
-and the Boston Transportation Department sit together and coordinate the signal- And the Boston Transportation Department sit together and coordinate the signal timings and everything along the whole corridor. So even in the city of Boston, from Austin Street out, now we're getting into Charlestown territory, but if you're familiar, down by essentially Bunker Hill, north of Bunker Hill is unconnected to the command center. BTD has a large transportation command center that they can adjust lights, they monitor with cameras, a lot of them happen automatically. Sullivan Square is not part of that command center. So what, one of our improvements that we're making, and the actual, the installation's underway now, is we're installing a conduit that's going to be connecting all newly upgraded signals at Sullivan Square. Come across the bridge, and the city of Everett has allowed BTD to continue to electronically control the signals all along Broadway up to Sweets' Circle. So all of the signals from Lower Broadway down now into downtown Boston will be controlled and linked so they can coordinate together. One of the biggest challenges right now for the Everett Police Department, just in moving construction traffic, is that light at Dexter Street, which is technically in Boston, is very difficult to control and time and sync, and so we'll eliminate a lot of those issues and problems by connecting everything.
And one last question for you, then, someone else. Was there ever thought of a road, you know, where the windmill, whatever that stupid thing is up there, and put a border road that would connect onto that, what you call it, that bridge going into Boston, alleviate maybe some of that?
So not, there, we have, we are actively pursuing and considering the pedestrian bridge that will leave from the southern tip of our site and go across the river into Assembly Row, into the Orange Line Station there. But there was never consideration to any adjustments to the bridge.
Yep. I just thought that'd be kind of, we'd get the traffic out, it would take away the process of being a peninsula and more or less give a digress out of it, other than the Broadway one. But thank you.
No, we have our main site entry and exit is the one you've seen on Broadway. Everything else is already owned land that's being operated for a number of different purposes.
Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Councilman McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just have a couple of quick questions for Mr. Taco. Mr. Taco, the, I see recently, right outside the Gateway Mall, there is actually a new exit on Sweets' Circle. There seems to be a new lane that was created when you're coming out of the Gateway Mall Road. Do you, is that jawwork? Do you know anything about that road, that circle and the new lane that's now currently blocked off, but it looks like it's a new passive lane? Do you know anything about that? I saw it this weekend.
So as part of the modifications to Santilli Circle, there has been a lot of lane modifications, and really those adjustments are meant to help, one, ensure that folks that are trying to travel both ways, out of the mall, onto Route sixteen, can work more seamlessly and not get clogged up with the traffic movements that are trying to circle back around the rotary, and vice versa. The ones coming out of BNY Mellon, or coming down the ramp that want to get onto sixteen eastbound, or, sorry, westbound, heading towards Wellington Circle. So that's what those adjustments are intended to do. There has been some tweaking to allow for that freer mobility on both sides.
No, and I think it's great, because we all have seen congestion at the Gateway Mall in times that it takes hours to get out of the Gateway Mall, unfortunately, and I think that, I was really excited to see that recently. I just have two last questions for you. Alfred Street Bridge, I know there's a lot of talk about the Alfred Street Bridge that's going, there's going to be significant work that's going to be done there. That is not Encore Boston Harbor work? There is no involvement with your, with your company, correct, for Alfred Street Bridge?
That is correct. Boston Transportation Department was just participating in a meeting with the Everett Chamber of Commerce two weeks ago to update some of the businesses down there on what was happening, and they expect that that work will begin in September. And what they said, again, this is unrelated to us, it's from structural issues that were discovered after the completion of the original reconstruction of that bridge, but they expect the construction to begin in September and run throughout the winter, and they will have similar lane closure patterns to the first bridge reconstruction. So there'll be full-deck closures, basically bringing the four-lane bridge down to two lanes, and they'll work on either side of the bridge to make those adjustments. The good news is I, they have assured us that all of this should be done before opening of the resort, when we expect to have an increased volume in visitors.
Okay. But I just want to make it clear that it's not jawwork, that you guys have not involved in it, and that you are not held responsible for anything.
That's correct. And in addition to that, there's a large project, I think, that's been before you, is the EverSource substation that's being constructed in East Boston.
Yes.
Also, not our work, but we are trying to coordinate with EverSource and with their contractors so that all the impacts to the community can be limited in scope and that we could rip up the same roadways once. And so we're trying to the best of our ability to coordinate those efforts, but that's another major project that we'll be working really in the same areas, Dexter Street, Robin Street, and the entirety of Beecham Street as well.
Okay. And I'll save some of my additional questions for Thursday night at the public community meeting, but some of them will be regarding freight liner and the development down at Seven Inca Park, so we can discuss that Thursday night. Thank you.
Sure, great.
Councilman McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. President, to our invited guests. Mr. Taco, I like when you come here, because we get a whole gamut of information, we get a presentation, we get everything that we need, so I want to thank...
Can you tell that to my wife?
Yeah.
She says when I come home, she gets no information, and...
Well, that's between you and her. But between you and us right now, when you come here, you give us a whole gamut of information, so that's a good thing. I have a couple of questions that I just wanted to ask you. Now, Encore, is that a five-star?
Encore?
Yeah, Encore, Encore.
Yes, so Encore, we have two Encore properties, both, one in Las Vegas, next to the Wind Resort in Las Vegas, and one in Macau in China, which is also a sister property to the Wind over there. It's actually our more luxurious brand. It's, if you can imagine, that there's a step up to the Wind Tower, and that would be viewed as the Encore Tower, which was supposed to be designed more intimately, and it's just a different, different atmosphere. Essentially, it is a brand that is well-recognized around the world, just like our Wind brand is. We have it at all of our locations.
Reason I ask is because there was rumors, you know, that were out there of a sale or something to that effect, and we were, we were wondering if it was going to be sold to a lower star, like a three-star or something to that effect, so no. This is a five-star?
Nope, this is a, this will be a, you know, it's our commitment that we're working very hard, and we have a large operation team working on this right now, is achieving our Forbes five-star rating within the facility here in Everett. So we haven't skipped a beat there on that level, on construction or everything else, so we're just moving full steam ahead.
Awesome. And that's good news, and that hopefully will quell any rumor that was out there. As far as additional growth goes, where is that going to be coming? Is that coming down through Everett, or where is that going? Additional growth, like any other hotel chains, any other storefronts, any of that stuff? Is that going to be happening?
Well, I think that would be up to other developers. I will say that there's, we've acquired some parcels across the street, and then we really, I've said this before in front of you, we really don't have an idea of what that will be, but at some point, we'll have to go forward and go through the city and go through the state with another environmental review process, in my opinion. It'll be something similar, a hospitality, it's our intention to continue to nurture the area and bring it forward as a hospitality destination area for the greater Boston area.
Absolutely, yeah, no, I think it's great, because there was also rumors of it being just open-air lots and stuff like that, and I said, no, there's no way.
No.
You know, there's a plan that's in play.
We paid far too much money to have open-air lots down there.
Absolutely.
But to be fair, that's what they are at the moment, and we've been doing our best to mitigate our construction impact in the neighborhood by parking construction workers, and we continually are hamstrung with the growing demand for parking in the area, with our growing construction workforce, and also in balance with the residents of the businesses in the area.
Awesome. And I know that there's a plan for all the greenery and all that stuff, that's, it's starting to show now, correct?
Yep.
Okay, and that's going to be...
And all that landscaping will continue right through the fall.
Okay. So that'll continue right until opening, probably? Okay. Now, I met with your security team, they're awesome, as far as I'm, you know, as far as I'm concerned with that. I suggest that if we have any concerns with that, or any security concerns at all, maybe you set up some time so certain members can come in, or, you know, do it off-site.
Sure, we'd be happy to have you. I think last time you came in with the Public Safety Committee?
Yeah.
Be happy to do that again.
All right. Awesome. Thanks, John, for coming.
Thank you. Excuse us, the customary thanks.
We still have one more speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilman Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to, for Councilman Simonelli, to Mr. Taco. Is the Silver Line train station in the works? If so, where would it be located?
So we are one hundred percent supportive of extending the Silver Line through Everett. We've been working closely with the mayor and his team on looking and reviewing that as an option. As you know, it recently opened in Chelsea at the, I think the last stop is near the Market Basket Facility. The MBTA has, we've looked at it internally, the MBTA is reviewing it. Stephanie, I'm sorry, Secretary Stephanie Pollak has spoken very favorably of the idea, not just within Everett, but I've heard her speak around the greater Boston area about this as an initiative that makes a lot of sense. I, you know, I can foresee it. I don't know, she'll have to, the Mass, they'll have to do its own study, but there's right-of-way that's available adjacent to the commuter rail line, and so that could be carried along, which is that, you know, the industrial area under Sweets' Circle, and then, and then over by the resort, eventually leading out onto Broadway, and it could end up at Sullivan Square Station. So, interesting stuff. There's, there's a bit of ways to go from here to there, so they're looking at a number of different iterations. The city's shown them different plans for coming up Second Street, over to Ferry, and then eventually ending at Malden Station. There's been some talk of going down Beecham and out that way, so there's, there's a lot of possibilities. I think that what is encouraging is that Secretary Pollak, and from what I've heard at the state, sees that as a, a good value as compared to, for instance, a Green Line extension, which is very costly, and you're talking about major railway work and rights-of-way issues. This seems relatively, you got tired vehicles, you can just, you know, put them on road, roadwork, and it can make a lot of sense for short money and open up the area to a lot of public access.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Excuse us, customary thanks, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for coming up.
Yeah.
Show me your pleasure.
Can we refer back sponsor?
We have motion to refer item number twenty-eight back to sponsors, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, we have some people in the audience that have appointments, but we also have three people in the audience that I see that are here for a license, which they came to the License Committee. So I would recommend, if we could please take the license, people first, and I'll do that in the form of a motion, items twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
We have a motion to take items number twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five collectively. Second it, all in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read the items.
Item number twenty-three is an order offered by Councilor Peter Anapolitano as president. It's a petition for a new livery license for VLA-NAR Transportation at four thirty-three Broadway, Suite C, Everett. Item number... Do you want me to read all three?
Collectively or not?
Yep, I'm sorry. Item number twenty-four is an order offered by Councilor Peter Anapolitano as president. It's a new petition for mechanical repair and auto body repair license for light auto sales and repair, three sixty-seven Third Street. And item number twenty-five is an order offered by Councilor Peter Anapolitano as president. It's a petition for a new Class Two motor dealer vehicle license for light auto sales and repair at three sixty-seven Third Street, Everett, Mass. These are all committee on community and business development reports.
Accept the committee report and place on file on all three.
Second it. Accept the committee report, place on file on all three. Excuse me on that, can I just get a clarification on something?
I was just going to say, okay, go ahead.
Yes.
Would persons apply for livery license, right? Do they required to have parking off-street? I'm just curious.
Yes.
Do they?
You cannot park a livery on...
No, just for future reference, because when these start coming up...
Through a home occupant permit and through our licensing requirements, they can't get a sticker either. No taxi or livery can't get stickers, you know, for overnight parking, et cetera. They're not allowed to park on the street. I mean, during the day, if they're coming in and out...
Yeah, I'm just talking about the home base for these places.
No, no, you have to have your own parking spot, whether it's in a home or not.
Yep.
That's part of the home occupant for a home residential area, and even still, you're not allowed to get the sticker.
All right.
So just so you know, we are in the process, and we will have it on the next agenda, the updated livery license clarification, so this, so we don't send these back to you...
So we don't open up something here we can't control, that's all I'm saying.
Correct.
Okay. Now, thank you for the clarification.
Item number twenty-three, Mr. President, one of my colleagues, I'm sure can answer. Under the livery license, does that, what does that allow, Mr. Clerk? Is that one vehicle that gets permitted?
They can go up to two. This gentleman has one vehicle. You have to register it. Starting next year, we have a new, the new livery license process that our city solicitor has reviewed, the licensing update that we're putting before you. It will require specific licensures, and every May, the police department will inspect the vehicle to make sure it's cleanly and good working order and et cetera. They will be in charge, both for our taxi and our livery licenses. So this will be a yearly inspection, not, excuse me, not only will the livery company be licensed, but the driver. In the case of this gentleman and anyone that is the driver and the company, as long as they only have one vehicle, I'm not going to license them separately. It'll become one license, and you'll see that in our new ordinance.
No, and I remember working on that last year as a legislative affairs committee with some of my colleagues in a work session. My only question is, under that license, so he would be able to have two vehicles?
Up to two vehicles.
Up to two vehicles?
By ordinance.
Okay.
But don't forget, our home occupant permit doesn't allow you to park more than one vehicle in a residential district, so even though you're up to two, technically you can only have one.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for your clarification.
And we are working on those tweaks to amend that, and you'll see them shortly.
Any further questions on item twenty-three?
Favorable action on the order.
We have motion for favorable action on item number twenty-three, second it. Clerk will read the roll.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Councilor Marchese?
Yes.
Councilor Metuski?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
President Anapolitano?
Yes.
Ten yays, zero nays, Mr. President, you have passed the order. Just the petitioner, sorry, this will be ready on Wednesday afternoon, anytime after twelve. You can come and pick up your license. Thank you.
Any questions on item number twenty-four?
He's got one more, right? Oh, no.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Have a motion for favorable action on item number twenty-four. All the papers are out?
Yes, this already came out of committee. It was, it's in essence a transfer of license. He'll be relinquishing the license at the moment that you pass this, and all papers are in order.
Oh, okay. No second? Second. Okay, we have a motion for favorable action, second it. Clerk will read the roll.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Councilor Marchese?
Yes.[1724.15]
Yes.
Councilor Siminelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Ten yeses, zero nays, Mr. President. You have passed item number 24.
You have passed item number 24. Any questions on item 25?
Fable action on the order.
We have a motion for favorable action on the order, seconded. Clerk will read the roll.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Councilor Marchese?
Yes.
Councilor Matuski?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Siminelli?
Yes.
President Napolitano?
Yes.
Ten yeses, zero nays, Mr. President. Passed.
Congratulations, and thanks for your patience this evening.
And the same thing, anytime noon, Wednesday afternoon, 12:00 or later, you can pick up your license. Okay, follow. Thank you very much.
The police suspended rules and takes items number 4, 7, 8, and 9.
We have great safety, we have an appointment here.
There's appointments. Yeah, he's one of them. 4, 7, 8, 9. We have a motion to take collectively items number 4.
Four.
Give him one more.
Of all the appointees, right?
8, 9.
Yep.
4, 7, 8, 9, of all the appointees.
Those are the appointees. Clerk will read the items.
Item number 4. Is an appointment offered, excuse me, a confirmation of an appointment offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president. In accordance with Section 2, multiple member boards of Section L, Traffic Commission, Paragraphs 2A of the City of Everett Administrative Code, I hereby submit for your approval the appointment of Frederick Cofasso Jr. to the Traffic Commission for a term expiring March 2019.
Fable action.
Second.
Did you want me to read them all first, and then?
All right, if I get, if I get some clarification, if we take them collectively, they have to be read first. If we take them individually, then, we should take them individually and take the motions individually. Show move, Mr. President. Okay, just for clarification, collectively.
Yeah, we're, please, okay. So, item number 7 is an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president. I hereby confirm the appointment, subject to the confirmation by the City Council, Bernard J. Devro to the position of assessor for a three-year term ending May 2021. Item number 8 is an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president. I hereby appoint, subject to the confirmation by the City Council, Greg St. Louis to the position of Director of Engineering for a three-year term ending May 2021. And item number 9 is an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president. I hereby appoint, subject to the confirmation by the City Council, Greg St. Louis to the position of Director of Public Works for a three-year term ending May 2021.
Spend Rule 20?
Yes, thank you.
Spend Rule 20, have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have.
Fable action on the orders.
Second. Fable action on the orders. Clerk will read the roll.
We're gonna do them separately, so this is item number 4, favorable action. Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
DePiero.
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Councilor Marchese?
Yes.
Councilor Matuski?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Siminelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Ten yeses, zero nays, Mr. President.
You've passed the order.
Item number...
Number 7. Number 7. Read the roll. 7, 8, 9.
I did favorable action on all.
Okay, thank you.
All four.
And Rule 20 was suspended on all, per...
Yes.
Item number 7. Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Councilor Marchese?
Yes.
Councilor Matuski?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Siminelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Ten yeses, zero nays, Mr. President.
You've passed item number 7.
And number 8. Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Councilor Marchese?
Yes.
Councilor Matuski?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Siminelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Ten yeses, zero nays, Mr. President.
Passed item number 8.
Congratulations.
And lastly, item number 9. Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio? Councilor DeForre?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Councilor Marchese?
Yes.
Councilor Matuski?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Siminelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Ten yeses, zero nays, Mr. President. You have confirmed all four appointments.
Congratulations to our appointees.
And I would just inform the appointees that you have 30 days to come to my office and be sworn in by myself. Thank you.
Mr. President, can you spend the rules and take item 38, 39?
I'm sorry, I have a signing sheet.
Second of the motion.
I have a signing sheet, and we have chief...
No cross?
I have it right here. The chief has been waiting out there, I'm sorry.
Okay.
The next item...
Do you withdraw your, your motion?
What is the, what is the next number?
Councilor DeFlorio, next item.
35.
Clerk will read item number 35.
Item number 35, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Michael K. Marchese to discuss what steps are being taken in preparation for the public safety and opening of Encore Boston Harbor.
Councilor Marchese?
We have Chief Colley coming for us.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. The ayes have it. The evening chief, could you state your name for the record, please?
Chief Colley, Everett Fire Department.
Hi, Chief, I'll tell you, chief, you heard, obviously, I was speaking to Mr. Taco Vigotti. How is, we will be stretching the city in a drastic way. Will it be a lot of resources expended down Lower Broadway?
Absolutely.
Fire Department, you know, we could see an increase in the size of the fire department. Is, is there anything in the making to maybe keep some kind of truck or something down there?
Right now, obviously...
I mean, there's not even a Cataldo ambulance down there, is there?
No.
So, I mean...
But right now, our Cataldo ambulances that provide services to the city...
That's the one up here.
We provide services to Lower Broadway as we always have.
Yeah.
And obviously, with the construction going on, we have some details...
I'm just saying with the traffic, everything, the access being down, it'd be a lot...
We've talked about, and Mr. Taco touched base on the traffic over the next couple of years, as they get to where they need to be, a lot of the construction. We, and my team, have worked and started to look at the possibility of during rush hours, pre-staging some resources down in that area, maybe on the Boston Everett line, that if we had an incident, we wouldn't have to travel from Everett Square. So, we're looking into all that. As far as long-term goals of being down there, obviously, we see the development of one building. We know that there's other buildings coming. We don't want to jump too quick and, and still have to come back and say, what we thought we needed, we need more. We're also looking at the southern, southern side of Revere Beach Parkway. That's obviously, a lot of development is going on down there, so there might be something in the future that we'd like to be looking at that would serve both those areas as far as access up Beecham Street to the Lower Broadway area. Everything's really in play right now with everything.
I mean, chief, is there, you think it's, like, about time that, you know, the fire and all, the, the safety people and the, I mean, even the, the public, you know, the, the city ads, they get together, they form a plan, what's gonna happen come May 20th? Because that's gonna come awful quick, awful quick, after that winter, those four or five months.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna, it is, and, and we've been working on our response plan for the, for the completed, so it's been, it's been an interesting process for me. I've been chief for two years, fire prevention, two years before that as deputy chief. So, I've been with this, this project the whole way. But we've been working on a response plan since the day the license was granted, and we continue to do that. We're working with the outside towns, our mutual aid companies, and we're working with, within our department, doing internal training. We're gonna be bringing some high-rise training in, some different things like that, to prepare for a building of this size. That being said, the building, we're very proud of the building that they're building as far as from a fire code standpoint. It exceeds most codes and most standards for a building this size. We have a private fire protection engineer who's worked on us, part of that host agreement where they brought in, you know, outside consultants to help us, which is one of the best in the state. So, we're very happy with that. But that doesn't take away the, the fact that we know we're gonna have increased calls for services from what we used to have down on a vacant piece of property, which was literally nothing, to, you know, having a, a large-scale resort in our city. We're, we're trying to prepare the best we can. We understand the openings coming up rather quickly, but I feel we'll, we'll be prepared when that day comes. The interesting part of it is, right now, we're working the construction phase of it. So, we have four firefighters there during the day shift. We have two firefighters there at night. We have had some incidences there. Unfortunately, we had one fatality there. My members worked diligently to extricate the members, so we're happy with the response. We've worked very closely with Suffolk and the Wind Corporation with having those guys on board down there. We've been very happy with that, and I think they've been happy with the services.
The, really, the reason for this, this resolution was to find out, if the city is, has a group of their 10 troubleshooters, you know, not only fire, but, you know, police, everybody, to find out when that opens up, that's gonna be...
Absolutely.
That may be a lot more work than the rest of the city.
No, that's a great idea, councilman, I think we...
I mean, manpower and everything.
Yeah, we can get that ball rolling. Obviously, public safety, I work very closely with Chief Maisy and his team, and, and we work very closely on, obviously, the developments that are going on, and we work closely with the other organizations, too. So, we can definitely bring department heads together, DPW, everybody, and kind of work towards those goals.
I mean, maybe not now, but maybe after summer, if we could maybe get some kind of progress report, you know, just to let us, to let the people know that, you know, they're just up here sleeping.
No, no, absolutely. And Councilor McKinnon and I had the pleasure of going over to the, the Wind Corporation, and we walked through the fire alarm system. And I'd welcome anybody in the panel that, you know, wanted to do that. It's a great thing. It's a pretty impressive operation that they're gonna be producing there, so.
I, I appreciate it. Everybody has any more questions? For chief, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I couldn't agree more with this item with Councilor Marchese. I think that we have all talked about it since the beginning of how the community was gonna form around this project and how it was all gonna come about, but the time really has come now that we need to figure it out, because we can't continue to wait next month, next week, and we meet monthly with them, and I know that the Wind Corporation is always...
Do you have any questions for the chief?
I do. I apologize, Mr. President. My only question to the chief is, in Charlestown, Sullivan Square, there's a fire station that's even closer than any of our stations to this site. Have you, has the city have ever talked with Boston about mutual aid agreements or some sort of, because they would get to the site a lot faster from the Sullivan Square Fire Station in Charlestown.
That remains to be seen, but that's a personal thing.
That, that our, that our...
With the chief.
If we don't have equipment stored down beyond the rotary.
So, part of the mutual aid agreement, in currently, right now, the run-cards, and that's how we use them, it's an antique term, but we still use the term run-cards. The run-cards for Lower Broadway includes Engine 32 and Ladder 9, which is right next to the Schraff Center, if you come through Charlestown. So, they, they're still on that boxcar. They were when it was Monsanto, and they'll be now, so they go directly to the fire, absolutely. We've also talked to Somerville about having some increased presence in a, in a confirmed incident. So, we know we're gonna have food issues, we know we're gonna have medical issues, but we're talking about a confirmed incident there, a large-scale fire or emergency, and that's when we would bring in these. They would still respond. We're also talking about staging areas. We're also talking about our response from the new roads that they've built behind the T, from their Charlton Street property. So, we would actually forego 99. We would actually get off at the Bat Yard and then cut down through that backside. So, we, these plans are all, all in play, but it's, it's a great point. Mutual aid, it doesn't matter if the, if the building was there or not, those, they're already in play.
So, that agreement is in play, and it has been?
Exactly.
And it has been?
It has been, and it will continue, and then if, Boston's a great, a great neighbor for us as far as the fire service is concerned. We get any resources we want from whenever we want. We give them any resources, like Chelsea and Somerville and Malden, everybody that you see. So, the Metro Chiefs Association that manages the metro run-cards is, is a great organization. It does a good job for us.
That's great. And the other thing, has, has there been any sort of training plan put in place for high-rises? We don't have any, obviously, in Everett, but has there been any options to go into Boston possibly, or other places that have these-sized buildings?
So, to, to not correct you, without getting too specific, we do consider, like Sacro Plaza, we consider 30 Chelsea Street. We, we do consider some high-rises in the city, high-rise operations. And it's, without getting too, too down a path here, it's, it's internal firefighting, so that's how we do it. We go two floors below a fire, we use the stand pipes, we use the internal systems, we use the sprinkler system. Rather than you see us add a two-and-a-half-story wood frame with the ladders thrown, make an entry through windows, things like that. We won't have the opportunity in like a big building like a Sacro Plaza or Thirty Chelsea Street or the Encore. So, we will do those trainings. We can actually mimic a lot of the trainings by using like a Sacro Plaza. We plan on doing that. Right now, one of my deputies is researching the best strategies and tactics. We're gonna be bringing in outside consultants to do some training over the next probably four or five months. The beauty of the construction, it's moving so rapidly, that it's, the building's gonna be close to compete, complete long before it's occupied. So, we're gonna have the opportunity to train where we're gonna play. So, that's, we're excited about that.
And I'll leave it at that, and I wanna discuss it further with you.
Absolutely. You guys are always welcome to reach out to me.
On this, thanks, Chief, I appreciate you.
No problem.
Counselor McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. President, to our chief. Chief, we were down there, we, we had good discussion down there. The, the systems that they have in play mechanically are gonna be outstanding, I believe, so. And I know that you commented on it down there at the time. Also, we have Somerville coming in to actually, are they gonna be part of command staff as well?
Exactly. So, Somerville, Somerville responds to our city with a deputy chief, or a district chief, they call them there. So, when they, when we have Somerville apparatus come in, they'll bring a, a district chief in. That doesn't matter if it's a multi-alarm fire locally. What I looked at is because of the Fire Command Center is, is so intricate, we're gonna have to train people to utilize that. I know my incident commander's down there. It's gonna be hard-pressed to keep them in the room to monitor these systems. We could go to Boston because they bring in district chiefs. We looked at Somerville because there's a smaller pool of them, it's easy to train them. And Chief Breen over there was very receptive to that, so as we start to train on the systems, we'll bring those, those guys in.
How many, how many are there, chief? I forget about.
They probably have eight, eight to.
Eight to nine?
Well, I, I guess they probably have twelve or sixteen because they have two on each group, so. But it's a manageable size. But the beauty of that is we can bring them in, train them on the systems, and then on a confirmed incident, you know, we're down there. My incident commander can be on scene of the actual incident. These members can be inside relaying that information back to them, so we'll have a chief officer in there. It's all, it's all a very fluid situation, but I'm, I'm thinking it's.
It's on incident, whatever the incident.
Exactly, exactly.
Also, chief, the, now, your response times down there now, from our fire stations to there, what is it?
No traffic, two minutes, you know. Traffic, four, you know, four and a half. The beauty of it, like morning traffic, there's very light traffic coming in the opposite direction, so most of my guys will get around the rotary and they're, they're able to run right down the other side. Like I said, when that construction really ticks up, up down there, we're gonna have to look at staging a piece of apparatus down there. We've spoke to Wynn, we've spoke to National Grid because they're doing some work on a few of those streets as well to put, you know, just stage them there during rush hour in both directions. We do get some pretty good accidents down there, even though you don't think people are going that fast, but they can really, really get themselves jammed up down.
Absolutely.
High schools as well.
Now, the, the number of staff that you have currently, that's, that suffice right now?
Right now, it does.
To open?
Yep, right now it does. I'd always, you know, I'm a fire chief, I always want more people.
Of course you do. And we wanna give them to you if we can.
Exactly, exactly. I want, I want us to be efficient, too. I want us to really, it's a new building for us. It's gonna be definitely an increase in calls and service, but we wanna make sure that we, we throw a good defense at whatever that's bringing back to us.
Absolutely. Now, the, the other thing, too, was, I know when we were at a meeting down there as well, the, the police chief.
Yes.
Chief Maisy, he was trying to negotiate something with state. Do you, do you have any information on that?
I don't. That's more of a law enforcement side of things. It's, it's something to do with the state's jurisdiction, the memorandum of agreement. I really thankfully don't have to.
You don't have any, any troubles with that yet?
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I, we may have to bring him up just to see where he's at with that. I know he was going after, he made mention that he was going after half the pie down there, so.
Exactly. I, if one thing I wanna say before I forget, in, in working this out with the Wind Corporation, we've given them like a six-month window, and we'd go back and review things. Because it's such a new thing for myself, my department, we didn't wanna say, hey, this is what we want, and then get that in writing and then be locked to it. So, we said, we're gonna review on, on a six-month basis. We could.
Incident by incident.
Incident by incident, and we'll look at that, and we'll see what it is. Currently, right now, what we agreed upon, and it's really kind of unheard of, but we're gonna respond to every alarm down there. And that includes internal alarms, and like if you go to a hotel and your internal alarm in your room goes off, and it doesn't set the, the whole fire alarm system off. Or get a response from us. It will down there for at least the first six months. We wanna make sure that we have.
With that being said, we still have coverage, main coverage Everett?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. And, and that's another big reason for that six months, because if we see that we're depleting our services for the rest of the part of the city, that's when we're gonna have to start talking about what we need to do. But right now, with the one building, it's a lot of ifs and whats. It's exciting.
Trial and error.
Absolutely.
That's what's gonna happen. All right, thank you. Thank you, chief.
No problem.
Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you for Counselor Simonelli. Thanks, chief. Do you have an evacuation plan in case of a major disaster at the casino?
Yes, part of their overall safety plan has instituted an evacuation plan. We've been dealing with their fire protection engineers since they constructed it, so every door has to be rated for how many people it can handle, when they get out of that building, where they go. So, we do have a full evacuation plan. It's quite daunting if you ever wanted to see it or read it. It's like a phone book, but it's, it's.
Is that, is that at the library?
Uh, no, it's not. We, we don't usually make the, it is a public document. We don't usually have those out, only because they're so, they're so cumbersome. It's like reading, you know, directions to build something. It's a pretty tough thing. Uh, yeah, and we have, we have gone through different things. We had to tweak some things. There's, there's more people coming out of doors than isn't. They use a lot of computer modeling, so it's, it's an interesting thing. Not a total, please, don't dump that building.
And chief, to like to be a realist, is, is it a reality that there's gonna be another fire station down there? Would that be your hope? I mean, I, I love Boston, too, and I love that their response time is excellent.
Yeah.
Would you feel more comfortable with the?
I would always feel more comfortable with my members responding first. And like I said, not to take away anything that Counselor McGlaughlin said. I would put my Engine One, Ladder One leaving Central Station against Nine and Thirty-two leaving Sullivan Square. We'll beat them to Sullivan Square.
You must be from Everett.
I am. We've beat them to Alfred Street Bridge, and that's in their side of town, so. I'm not worried about that. But to answer your question, of course, as this city doubles and this city starts to grow, yeah, there are different types of buildings, but we, we're changing a little bit. We, we're gonna have different calls of service. We see an increase in medicals. We have to look at increasing our numbers, but maybe bringing in our, our own ambulants. But we can talk about all that stuff in the future, but.
The, the thought pattern, chief, is that we're thinking about the more growth down there.
Absolutely.
And you all have been responsible for taking excellently LNG, this ocean front and all the rest of it, so.
We're definitely, you know, in all hazards department. We call ourselves a fire department, but we train for confined space, we train for hazardous materials, we train for medicals, technical rescues. That's what we do. And as things come into our towns, just like, you know, fifty, sixty years ago when LNG and all these other things started to come in here, switching out from the old Coke plants, right? We had to change our strategies and tactics. Now, we're, we're trading warehouses for apartments, and, and we're changing those tactics.
Thank you, chief.
No problem, thank you.
Any other questions?
Excuse customary, thanks.
Excuse customary, thanks. Second?
That's good.
All in favor? Thank you, chief. Counselor Marquez, your partner?
You know, I'd, I'd like to get this, and actually send this to the, to the mayor, to see if he can get, you know, his five or six brightest, and maybe, you know, come up and, and present something to us one every two months, just what progress they're making down there. I mean, I, you know, the chief obviously is, is, is very well-versed, but there's gotta be that overall plan that's gotta be started, started pretty soon down there. So, I, I'd like to send it to the mayor's office, see if they can, they have a committee they put together to see about, you know, you're putting on a whole, you know, new part of the city. I'd just like to see for myself, you know, what's gonna happen down there, and the people of Everett also, I'm sure, wanna see what's going on. A perfect question was, are we gonna have coverage if we send something down there? That's all. Do we need more fire vehicles? You know, questions like that are gonna have to come sooner or later. I'd rather sooner than later, and that's, that's what I'm, I'm trying to get.
And you're, and when you, how soon do you want a response?
If, if they, give it, give it a month for response, to see if they.
Do you want a response back, or they, they can send you a directly a response also?
Well, I mean, they can send a direct response, and they could ask to see if one of us wanna be on the committee and meet, which, you know.
And I'll write that in the, in the.
Yeah, and we'd be, I'm sure a couple of us would be, it's exciting to get involved down there for the last month now that it's all coming together.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Then we could relay it. I'm sorry, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I would respectfully ask my colleague if I could add my name to this piece. I think it's well overdue, and I think a lot of us have talked about this for, for a long time. I'm sure that maybe even more of us would like to get on it. Counselor Marquez is a home run tonight on this piece, because we need to really take this serious and work together with everybody so that we're all on the same page, and that there's not different fractions of the city working on different plans and different aspects. So, I respectfully ask if I could be put on as a co-sponsor of the site, Counselor. Thank you.
Would I have to make that amendment?
Yeah.
The second, the motion to put Counselor McGlaughlin's name onto this piece.
It was a motion to add Counselor McGlaughlin to item number thirty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Guys have it? It's a motion to send this to the mayor's office with a response. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Guys have it?
Can we suspend the rules and take item number twenty-seven, twenty-nine collectively?
Wave a knife?
Motion to take item number twenty-seven and twenty-nine collectively?
Well, it depends on who gets it.
Okay, do I have a second? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Guys have it? Counselor, read the items.
Item number twenty-seven, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor, Counselors John Leo McKinnon and Counselors Fred Capone that the mayor personally appear at our next meeting to address the ongoing flood problems at the culvert on Spring Street, especially in light of discussion that Everett Veterans Memorial Stadium is to replace by State of the Art Stadium at the Seven-Eight Club Park. Item twenty-nine, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Fred Capone that the city engineer appear at the next city council meeting to discuss progress being made to restrict heavy trucking on Second Street between Broadway and Route Sixteen.
Can we have Mr. St. Louis before us, please? Second?
Thanks.
All in favor?
Thanks, Mike.
Guys have it? Can you, Mr. St. Louis, could you, give your, your name for the record, please?
Greg St. Louis, Director of Public Works and Engineering.
Congratulations tonight, by the way.
Thank you, sir.
Before we start, I wanted to congratulate you. Mr. St. Louis, on this piece here, have we, have you actually taken a look at Spring Street, or anything of the flooding situation that's going on down there?
Yes.
And do you have any knowledge of any maybe possible sales or anything like that that's happening as well?
Uh, we, we've certainly documented some of the recent flooding events down there, both with CZM and DEP. We've subsequently met with Chelsea on the topic in regard to some of those.
Chelsea City or Chelsea Corporations?
Uh, the City of Chelsea.
Okay.
Planning Department, Engineering Department, Department of Public Works.
Cause the, reason why I ask is because there's a number of properties that are involved with this, and they should probably also be involved as well, cause it runs directly under their property sites, so.
Correct, correct. And I am setting up a meeting with several of the representatives, representatives of the properties this week as well to relay some of those conversations. The purpose of the meeting with, with the City of Chelsea was to talk about group grant opportunities and supporting each other in those regards. Grants are available from Coastal Zone Management as well as other agencies, and some of those deadlines are fast approaching.
So, that, what we've been doing is just basically putting Band-Aids on the culvert down there and stuff like that to maintain it until we can actually do something with it, get everybody collectively in on this. How much would the project be for that to actually happen? I know it runs from Everett. We need possibly a pump station there, and also to pump the water out. I know that. And then also, there's a tunnel system that goes out through Chelsea into, where does it end up?
Uh, Island End River. The culvert was originally.
So, that right there, that goes, it's an Everett-Chelsea situation, so they would be on the hook for a certain amount, and so wouldn't we, right?
There are any number of parties that may be subject to repair costs.
Okay. And then those, those parties could also be businesses that are on top of this?
Correct.
Okay. Do you know how many are on top of that?
Uh, depends on the ways you view the way the culvert was constructed originally.
Sure. Can you give us a little insight, or do you wanna give a little insight right now?
If you've been in the mayor's conference room, uh, I'm sorry, yes, the mayor's conference room, there's a photo on the wall of Island End River prior to the.
I want you to give a description, because I know I've actually seen what's happening.
Sure.
I, I want you to give the rest to my colleagues if they don't know.
So, in the mid-sixties, the Island End River was permitted to be filled, and the culvert was permitted to be placed. Buildings such as the Boston Market Terminal, the Produce Center, I think, is it Century Bank at the top of Island End River there?
That's where it comes out.
Yeah.
That's where it comes out. The marinas in the location, I mean, there's, there's properties on both sides of the town line that are effectively on the filled tidelands that resulted in the placement of the culvert in the low-flow channel through the mud flats in the mid-sixties. So, there's any number of parties that benefit from the installation and location of the culvert. The city is one of the recent repairers of the culvert due to emergency actions taken by this council and others.
Sure. We put the Band-Aid on, basically. So, what I'm, what I'm, I guess what I'm asking is monetarily, we could be looking at possibly for the City of Everett fifteen million dollars? That's including the pump house and the piping going to Chelsea. Chelsea's on the hook for a ten million.
That is yet to be determined. The last cost estimate for replacement of the corrugated metal pipe system with a twelve-by-twelve concrete box culvert was about ten million. To say that was five years ago, those construction costs would be elevated now.
With a pump house or no?
That was without a pump house. Pump house would likely be another ten million dollars.
So, it's probably about twenty, twenty-five million now?
That's correct. Currently, I would not lean towards a pump house in this scenario, given the upstream restrictions. We would, we have other improvements to perform likely prior to a pump station in that location.
What would you do?
Uh, some of the piping, including the crossing under the tracks, need to be upgraded so that we would not be drawing down the inland water basically in the swale and not draining out the Commercial Triangle District and other low-lying areas.
So, the pump house would be like a last resort if we had no other?
It might be step five as opposed to step one.
Okay, so it's in the rear with the gear then, at this point. Yeah, I mean, it's not my area. It's my colleague from Ward One. There's a few of them here now that would probably like to speak on it, but I've looked into it, I did some research, I've talked to some people on it, and I, I know that, that they need probably some relief down here from, from that. The other part to this puzzle is there was mention of we were supposedly getting, selling Veterans Memorial Stadium.
I think some of the, the tidal effects that reached to Spring Street caused further backups from inland flooding, inland precipitation events. Those may affect the areas leading up to Chelsea.
Yep.
And certainly in the twenty-thirty and twenty-seventy inundation models, those areas are affected as well. So, part of, again, the grant processes we're looking at right now are trying to endeavor to make Everett more resilient to coastal flooding and the effects thereof.
And that would be federal and state funding?
Uh, the grants we're looking at right now, yes, it's predominantly state, I believe, at this.
It would be state?
We're looking into federal, but that's part of the conversations with Chelsea as well.
Would that be under FEMA or?
Correct, MEMA.
Okay, so MEEPA, FEMA. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the engineer. Thank you for being so patient and waiting around today. It's been a long night. I apologize for that. I know that we get the culvert addressed at some point in time. There's a been, there's been a lot of debate as to how far north the water's down there affecting Cottage Street, Chelsea Street, that area. I'm not so sure they're related, but you can't know for sure until you solve one. And I think the, obviously, this has been a problem for a long time, and all of us have been working on this for a long time. And I think that the toughest thing was trying to get all the responsible parties together to actually get to the point where they're willing to, A, be involved, B, possibly talk about responsibility. How, how is that going? Have we made any progress on that front?
Uh, we have. I mean, it's a long road, and certainly it's been going on for, well before my involvement. We have studies going back to two thousand nine, and before that even, when some of the first collapses were addressed. We, we have been having conversations with some new interested parties in the land down there. They have a slightly different approach than their predecessors, as do I. So, again, we're trying to meet together this week to talk about some of the options and paths moving forward as far as the city having grant money available now, what potential mechanisms could be available to fix the culvert financially and otherwise. So, it's an ongoing conversation.
Okay. And all the interested parties that would have some potential exposure, has everyone been contacted at this point in time?
Um, no, I, right now, it's really been the loudest voices in the room, those at Ground Zero with the collapses. I believe the parties that have been most prevalent are those that have financially bore some of the previous repairs in addition to the repairs performed by the city. I think that's been the focal point. If, if we can't gain their support on a path, a structure, then we're not gonna gain the surrounding affected property support.
Yeah. And it's, it's amazing that you can have folks in that area see the level and the depth of the water, and just, oh, no, I don't need to worry about that. It's clearly a problem for all of us. We all have to deal with it, so. I, I thank you for that. I'll reserve my questions on twenty-nine until we, we get there, but, but thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Marquez.
I've got, Greg, just a couple of quick questions. First of all, you know, the biggest problem there is the high tide there, so until that thing gets dredged, it's not gonna do anything. High tide comes, it all stops. I think you have a nine-foot corrugated pipe there. It's probably fifty percent covered, isn't it, inside the?
There is an active collapse that I've reached out to our emergency management team and MEMA to review as part of the storms that we received around March first. We're working with the state to have a site walk to see if there's any emergency funds available to address the current collapse.
The past collapse, which was addressed, I think, by this council about five or six years ago, has anybody reviewed the condition of that? I mean, was it replaced with a corrugated pipe or a smooth pipe?
So, currently, the repairs that have been done were reconstruction of the head wall with some gabion, which is chain-link wrapped trap rock. The head wall's in good condition as of the last storm event that I went down there and viewed it. The second collapse was daylighted and had driven sheeting along the sides of it. The driven sheeting should have a life of fifty or more years, even in the saltwater environment. The ends of that sheeting were basically the original culvert with sort of a steel or sheeting head wall to it. So, those end treatments to that collapse would be the point that I would be, have the most concern with moving forward. The third collapse, which is the active collapse, was a daylight section pipe that was excavated and graded back slightly. The current condition is such that the construction phasing that was placed around the excavation is now falling into a new portion of the hole that appears to be about fifteen or twenty feet wide or extending towards the guardhouse.
Cause we, we had a couple of years ago, when Mr. Hillman was mayor, we sent, we went in there with cameras, and it just appeared that what we saw was that most corrugated pipes were taken on dirt, piece of wood, and everything was just building up. So, some parts of it, there was probably like four feet of blockage in there before the water could even get through them. And then combined with the high tide over there, it just backed up. I mean, is there any way that they could, is there, there's a little waterway? Is there anywhere that could be dredged to hold more water beside it, or before it goes into the pipe?
On the city's side of the culvert?
I believe it right beside, um, particularly the Barn Brothers. I believe there's a little, a, a small little water area. Could that be excavated back a hundred feet and thirty feet deep to alleviate some of the water during the high tide? You know, give it a chance to tide to go down and water flow out again.
So, some of the varying strategies to address the overall concern, it, it's certainly a multifaceted approach. We could have a tide gate on the north side of the rail tracks to just protect the Commercial Triangle. That's the easiest thing and the least financially onerous thing to take on. We could have a second tide gate at the mouth of the Island Dead River where it meets the culvert in Charlestown, uh, not Charlestown, Chelsea. That would be likely a group project between the City of Everett and Chelsea, and would protect this culvert that continues to fail as well as a second culvert that runs down Beecham Street of similar age and material.
Now, that won't cause any flooding, the, the.
It would protect the si, it would protect from the tidal surge upstream towards developed lands. A third project that's being pushed by Chelsea right now is a berm along the Island Dead River to prevent overtopping into the bank parking lot, the marina. That certainly has a resiliency effect for the twenty-thirty and the hundred-year storm events as opposed to the monthly flooding, flooding that's readily available, readily available.
It's just a shame for the time when Tom Birmingham was having everything dredged, he didn't come down another hundred feet and push it all back to take that with him. But thank you very much for your time. I yield to our council over there. Excuse me.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I see this piece has the mayor personally, asking the mayor to personally appear. Do we know if the mayor's in the building?
I'm getting a sign from the chief of staff. No, he's not in the building.
Mayor's not in the building, okay.
Would you like to invite the chief of staff up?
No, that's okay. I wanna speak to the mayor, because I'd like to. No, that's okay, I want to speak to the mayor because I'd like to know, through his years as our mayor, what conversations he personally has had with Chelsea and the other butters. I'm sure he's had numerous conversations, I know they've gone through administration in Chelsea with now Secretary Ash, the, the, um, Ambrosino. So I'd like to ask the mayor some questions about those conversations in years past and where we come today. Mr. St. Louis is new to the, to the community and new to the project, but I know the mayor has, has had conversations. It kind of frustrates me that when we ask for him to come, there's a reason to get these types of answers, and we can't get him to come. Unfortunately, I'll, I'll yield the floor to my colleagues, and I don't, I don't want to talk to anybody but the mayor because he's the only one that's had these ongoing conversations in years past with the adjacent butters to this project. But we really need to get some answers out of our mayor, we need to hear what he knows or what he's talked about and what he's agreed or didn't agree to with others, thank you.
I think I could answer a little bit from the chair because this has been, this is not a new, new topic. I believe Counsel Matuski will also agree because we, we put items on this flooding back in the early 2000s. So this was, and this was all prior to Councilman Hamlin being elected mayor. So this is an ongoing issue, but it's always come back to the cost and accountability. So as long as there's some action in that direction, you know, then I believe we're now moving in the right, in the right space. But the city has not had the means in the past to be able to address this problem. Believe me, there are three representatives in here that have represented Ward One, myself included, this is not a new subject. Do you have any, anything else, Counsel McLaughlin? Counselman, uh, Hamlin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just some information to enlighten you, I wasn't going to say anything, but back a while, I had ordered a company to come in, they cost us eight thousand dollars, that said a camera on tracks, a robot sort of a thing into that, into that tunnel. What they found, that had collapsed in some places, but they also found two automobiles, they found a dozen of shopping carts, they found some baby carriages, they found scooters, they found a door refrigerator, numerous fifty-five gallon drums, a lot of small, whether the one quart can of oil, all over the place. But anyway, we wanted to get it cleaned out, and we talked to the city of Chelsea. And the city of Chelsea said to us, well, it doesn't bother us, so it's not our problem. That was their official word to me. And I said we would split the cost right down, as a matter of fact, I said, I'll clean it up, and then we'll split the cost of putting a new culvert in, because you need a new culvert. And they said, no, and the most important thing that we needed on that thing project is a backflow preventor valve so that when we do get high tide, that closes and it doesn't let the high tide in. And the only problem that we really have with that now is that it floods Spring Street. And Spring Street, you can go waiting in that street, it's so bad. And that comes from across the railroad track, under the railroad track. And there's a big dike, whatever you want to call that, down in the, where the produce center is, there's that big lake down there and everything. They wanted to enlarge that, and, but, but everybody in Chelsea said, no, it wasn't their problem, they want, didn't want to do anything with it. And, and then I sort of fell out of favor and the thing just dropped, you know, so. But that's, that's the history on it anyway, and it's, it's a bad situation, but Chelsea doesn't want to help, then. Maybe the new guy might want to help, I don't know, it wouldn't hurt to ask him. Thank you.
Can we lay this over, excuse customary thanks, thank you for appearing. And we'll lay it over for one month and have a response back from Mr. St. Louis, either in writing or in person. Postpone.
We have a motion to postpone this to our second meeting in June?
Yes.
Okay, the second, all in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it, item number twenty-nine, Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President, just to follow up a prior conversation on this one. I know that the process of trying to get restricted trucking is very daunting, there's a lot to it. You get the state in, survey, all that kind of good stuff. I, I know that we talked about the possibility of maybe looking at different things. The trucks are still coming around the corner, they're still coming up on the curb, the bollard that's there is mangled. So I think, I think we might even need to put a new one up. It's leaning, I don't even know what, sixty-degree angle? But, and when you have trucks trying to make that turn, the vehicles on Second Street are in such a way that coming off of Broadway on the Second, it takes forever, you have to wait for cars to wait, everyone's slamming on their horns because traffic is a nightmare in the community. So when you have an eighteen-wheeler that's stuck and they can't go until Second Street effectively clears out, you have a problem there. And then when trucks are coming from Second Street on the Broadway, I've seen that too. It's not, those trucks don't go on the curb as much on Second, but I have seen occasionally trucks get up on the curb. So especially with the school a block away, it's, it really is a disaster waiting to happen. And I don't, I don't know what the answer is. Short of no heavy trucking, maybe you have to push the stop line on Second Street back further in order to let an eighteen-wheeler make the swing, but I don't know, do you, do you have any, any further thoughts on that?
So last we had discussed a topic, I had informed the council that I was seeking a proposal to look at traffic signals citywide. I've received that proposal, and that would include review of the traffic signals as well as geometry and other safety improvements. So we are still looking at implementing that study, which would give us a list of short-term action items like relocating the pedestrian head further from the corner so it doesn't get hit. Improving wider radiuses for truck turning, striping the box, you see a lot, so that cars don't block intersections as a whole. Some of those items may, may affect allowing the one larger truck to make it through in a more timely manner. Certainly backing up the stop bars is part of that, that type of improvement.
What kind of timeframe do you think for implementation of some of these ideas?
I think the schedule for the proposed contract would, would probably be six months, and that would be a matter of funding individual improvements and, and rating those improvements in regard to necessity.
As far as the bollard that's there now, that's kind of tilted, I would imagine, not engineer, that's what I'm going to refer, I'm going to rely on you on this one, I've got to think the structural integrity on that's got to be, you know, fairly compromised at this point. Do we need to put another one down there?
Not knowing what depth the bollard was installed to, did it go four feet deep, it's four feet above grade. We could add another bollard, we could raise the curb height there to prevent trucks from driving up on it, but ultimately, when you're dealing with an eighteen-wheeler, if they want to drag across something.
Yeah, yeah, so if you could look into the depth of the bollard that's there now, because like I said, it really is at a tilt and it's all mined up. Now, if it's deep enough in the ground, then it still has structural integrity, but I don't know, especially when you have kids crossing over there, I'd rather be safe than sorry. So I think with this piece, what I'll probably do is, you know, I'll defer to any colleagues that want to speak on it, probably refer it back to sponsor, just touch base with you from time to time and see what's happening. But in the interim, if you could take a look at how deep the bollard was installed, and if, in your opinion, you know, it still has structural integrity, great, if it doesn't, then addresses need be. But I don't have any other questions on this, I, I thank you for your help on it.
Counsel Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President, first of all, I want to congratulate you on your appointment this evening. Thank you, you really know what you're talking about. In a short period of time, I'm surprised that you know so, so much about some of the problems we face. Second Street, we did discuss, Mr. St. Louis, at the last meeting, the rating system on streets, and I thought maybe that would be in my mailbox, is that forthcoming?
It is, they're, they're finalizing the rating now, there were a number of different items that were involved in that scope of work. Ultimately, they'll be uploaded onto a website, and I can shoot you a PDF and a listing of all those streets.
Because the president of the council asked each councilman to submit a few streets that they considered the worst. Now, since the last council meeting, my, the worst streets, well, some of the worst streets, I'm not saying that they're worst, Cabot, Revere, Second Street, and I left out Walcott Street, but now I want to put that in there because they've ripped up that whole, it is like the Bermuda Triangle over there, that whole area is a mess. They've left out big equipment, this has been going on for three years now in that neighborhood, and those are some of the nicest homes in the city. I actually live on Lewis Street, so I have to go by this every day. But now there's a whole barrel of work being done over there. And what, what's, if, if it's okay, could you just fill us in what's happening there, do you know?
Sure, so the current projects underway are water improvement projects.
Water improvement, okay.
So they're increasing the capacity of the water system, replacing or tying over all the services to the new eight-inch water main. There's new gate valve work, some of the work that you're seeing at the intersections involves running new pipes under the MWRA mains, which is its own specialty type.
Isn't there a length of time where things, you know, unreasonable for contracting? I'll, I'll give you, for instance, I got a call or an email from a resident of Park Plaza last night. At two-thirty in the morning to seven o'clock in the morning, they were jackhammering, and I guess there was a leak, according to the city clerk, I mean, our new manager of the council office here, Mr. Mangan, he did some research for me. Are you aware of that problem that happened last night in that area? At two-thirty in the morning, there was some kind of water break, and for six or seven hours, the people in that neighborhood had to put up with, it's just a big mess over there, I don't know who the contractor is, but this has been going on a long time now. When we, when we put work out, isn't there a schedule that they have to be done by?
Yes.
Why has this thing dragged out for three years?
I can't speak to the, the three years prior.
Could you look into that for me?
But yes, I may.
Because, you know, a neighborhood can only take so much, you know, you, you expect, you know, three months, four months, this has been going on for three years, maybe longer.
Unfortunately, I will say, there are a number of streets in town that will end up receiving new gas mains, new water mains, new drainage. There, there's a backlog of work that will need to be addressed.
I've never seen work that is not progressing the way it should, other than the Florence Street Park.
Councilman?
Yeah?
I don't mean to interrupt you, but the piece in front of us is regarding Second Street, I would ask that you stay on topic.
All right, I'll stay on Second Street and then?
Please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate that. But you know my concerns, could you just find out when this is going to be completed so that we can get that neighborhood back on track? The warmer weather's coming, and I think three years is a long time for getting the neighborhood under control. Thank you, Mr. St. Louis.
Yes, sir.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. President, I just want to give Counsel Matuski a couple of updates on what he's talking about last night. The work is, we're out there to?
One second, one second, is this regarding Second Street?
No, just clarifying what you just spoke of, Mr. President.
Privately, okay, it's not, it's not on the piece before us.
I was just trying to give him some helpful information, so he's up to date.
I realize that, but I just stopped, I stopped the discussion regarding an off-topic item, I'm not going to allow it to continue.
That's fine, no problem. That's fine, Mr. President, I respect, I respect that, absolutely. My, my question on the topic itself, on the piece, is we saw several years ago on Tyleston Street, when you were coming off of Main Street onto Tyleston Street, they, before I was on the council, they pushed the white line back a number of feet off the intersection, and it allowed trucks to take the right-hand turn or the left-hand turn off of Main Street onto Tyleston Street. If it was strictly enforced, it would work wonderfully, unfortunately, it can't all the time be enforced, but when, when it is being, when it is properly working, you can see a big difference. I'm wondering if we can just go out and move that, the line back without having to wait the six-month window of time that you were just talking about. I don't see that being a big deal, to be able to just push it back off the intersection of Second Street. As Counselor Capone said, and both my colleagues have represented Ward One for a long time, that intersection's very busy because of the school down the street. There's a lot of kids that travel there twice a day. And I think by just pushing that back on Second Street would make a big difference to open up the mouth of the street to allow trucks to go onto Second Street while there's other plans in the works. Is that something that we could get done relatively quick, Mr. St. Louis?
Yes, I believe you could revise the stop bar location and highlight additional signage, but there certainly will be a, a learning curve for the residents and all the commuters of that area that enforcement's definitely going to be a, a large piece of that.
I know we have great traffic enforcement officers, I think if we work on this quickly, we could get it done in very little pain. I know it worked successfully in the Tyleston-Main Street intersection for the same circumstance. So I'd ask you to look at that, and this is obviously my colleague from Ward One's piece, but I'd, I'd like to see if you could respond to us and maybe email or whatever the form may be within a reasonable amount of time of the couple of weeks to thirty days of your ideas on being able to just push that stop bar back as a temporary fix to a long-term issue. If that's okay with my colleague from Ward One, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions for St. Louis? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. You made a motion or?
I was originally going to refer back to sponsor, but now we have a response coming back. Might as well just postpone this to the second meeting in June like the prior piece, because he's going to be up here to talk about it, so.
Okay, so we have a motion to, to postpone this until the second meeting in June, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Suspend the rules and take item number thirty-eight.
Before we proceed, I'm going to call for a ten-minute recess, in case you haven't been keeping track of the agenda, we're not even halfway. So we're going to take a ten-minute recess stretch, take a look at the agenda, let's proceed, let's decide how we're going to proceed. Let's go. Let's go.
Yeah, this is, this is out of control. Forty-five by...
Calling the meeting back into order?
Yeah.
Committee of the whole?
We should. All right, clerk, a resort to the regular order of business?
Mr. President, can we take, suspend the rules, take items five and six collectively?
As in the regular order of business?
Yes.
Thirty and 31.
Together, yeah.
We have a motion to take items number five and six collectively. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it? Clerk, read the items.
Item number five. This is accepted, as an order offered by Councilor Peter E. Napolitano as president to accept the donation. It's hereby submit for your consideration in order to accept the following donations: $950 from Nightship Brewing, $950 from Teamwork Cleaning Concepts, $950 from Duncan Galvanize, to the City of Everett's donation account to help fund the 2018 Summer Jumps program. Item number six is an order offered by Councilor Peter E. Napolitano as president to accept the donation. I hereby submit for your consideration in order to accept the donation of $500 from the Beta Group to the City of Everett's celebration donation account.
Favorable action, letter of thanks be sent?
Second.
Second.
We have motion to favorable action and a letter of thanks be sent. Second, all in favor?
Aye. Mr. President, there are orders.
Excuse me. Clerk will read the roll on item number five.
Item number five. Council Capone.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council DePiero.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Marchese.
Yes.
Council Matusky.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McLaughlin.
Yes.
Council Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Ten yeze zero neze, Mr. President.
Please suspend.
Item number five.
You still have number six.
Clerk will read, we'll read the roll five and number six.
Item number six. Council Capone.
Yes.
I still have a sign sheet, Peter.
Council DeFlorio. Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council DePiero.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Marchese.
Yes.
Council Matusky.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McLaughlin.
Yes.
Council Simonelli.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
Ten yeze zero neze, Mr. President, and you have passed the orders.
Please suspend the rules and take items number 30 and 31.
We have a motion to take items number 30, 31 collectively, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Clerk read the items.
Item number 30, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council John Leo McKinnon to request that the Traffic Commission and Sign Division place no parking 20 feet from corner of Woodward and Ferry Street and any or all other streets that have issues with people habitually on corners throughout the city hindering public safety officials from turning onto streets easily. 31 is a resolution, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Jr. to review safety issues around the Carrion School and that the DPW install a crosswalk at the corner of Cherry Street and Woodland Street at the request of parents and the principal of the Carrion School.
Okay, item number 30, Council McKinnon.
Can we have our city clerk just explain 30 for us?
Yes, very briefly, I have spoken both with Christopher Han at the lieutenant of, at the Traffic Division and the Traffic Commission. They are looking at the petition that was for one-sided parking, but in the meantime that the DPW director, engineer director, said that he will enforce it and make sure that state law 20 feet from the corner, so he's going to put up some signs that are not there on both sides of the corner because there are an issue. So that will be done hopefully by the end of the week or next week, and I will keep on the DPW director, but he gave me his word today that he would handle it.
Thank you. Council McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. On item 31, if you want to do 31st or...
Yeah.
Do you want to speak on 30 or 31?
31.
Okay. Anyone else on 30? Council McKinnon, your pleasure.
I'm all set with that, that response, and I'll refer it back to sponsor.
Second.
The motion is second to send item number 30 back to sponsor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? On item 31, Council DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to update the body real quick through the chair, this was in government operations and public safety. We referred the crosswalk to the Traffic Commission, I believe, as Council Simonelli said, there has always been one there. I think it was just an issue of not getting painted when the street was done over and all the other issues they had with signage and some requests with the traffic flow. I did speak to Jay Monty in planning and he was going to come up with some stuff and get back to us. I think we could refer it back to sponsor, but the sponsor reached out to Council McLaughlin, apparently requested it be laid over, but it's up to the body to work.
I actually have information on that.
Oh, wonderful.
Very briefly.
Wonderful.
This has already been on the agenda, it has already been ratified. We sent this back. It was passed, sent to the Traffic Commission with no response back, just an action. They handle it. This is accidentally on the agenda. It is being handled by the Traffic Commission and the administration, they are working on it, so it was, it was accidentally put up, placed on the agenda. There is no action necessary on this because I already finalized the minutes. Just so we know. Actually, there's no, literally no action necessary, that's the motion.
All right, with no action necessary, item 31, it shouldn't have been on the agenda. It's a dead issue.
Thank you.
Okay? No, it's not on the agenda to refer back, it's, it's not, it shouldn't be in error.
The answer is no action necessary, that is a proper motion because it is accidentally the, we've already voted on it. I can't let you vote on something that has been finalized without you asking for reconsideration or rescinding it, just so you know.
There's no action, there's no action. It shouldn't, it... Okay, we have a motion to take item number 38. Do I have a second? All in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it? Clerk will read item number 38.
Item number 38, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Steven Simonelli to request that the mayor set up a date for former Council Joseph R. King dedication with a request for a written response back to the council at our next meeting.
Council Simonelli. Refer item number 38, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it? Refer item number 38 to the mayor's office. Refer to the regular order of business. 13.
Can we take items number 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 21, 22 collectively?
Second motion. These are all renewals. Have I, we have a motion to take items number 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 20, and 21 collectively, all in favor?
21 and 22.
21 and 22, excuse me, collectively, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Read the items.
Item number 13, Mr. President, is an order offered by Council Peter E. Napolitano as president, petition of a renewal for a junk dealer license from Second Street Iron and Metal at 285 Second Street. Number 14 is a petition for a renewal of a junk dealer license for Pearl Horizon Wingland at 69 Rover Street. Item 15 is a petition for a junk dealer license renewal for Wentworth Precious Metals at 431 Second Street. Item number 16 is a petition for a junk dealer license renewal for Callow Precious Metals at 2-24 Dexter Street. Item number 17 is a petition for a renewal of a Class II motor dealer vehicle license for Woodlawn Auto Sales through Woodlawn Ave. Item 21 is a renewal of a junk dealer license for M&amp;S Metals Inc. at 391 Third Street. And item number 22 is a petition for a junk dealer license, collector license renewal from HH&amp;M Metals Inc. at 337 Second Street.
Favorable action? These are, these are renewals.
Yeah, not to the...
Is everything in? Second motion, all in favor?
All are in order. I just want to say that we do have issues with a few of them, that they're always late and we are addressing that in our new ordinances, but they're all in order.
We have a motion for favorable action, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, clerk will read the roll for each item.
Mr. President, if we could, I know in the past we've done this, if, if we could suspend the rules, take one vote for all of the pieces collectively, but instruct our clerk to record it accordingly for each vote. I know we've done that in the past, but...
Yeah, we have, but...
The question came up during one of the parliamentary procedure classes that this is actually not legitimate.
Just keep it cleaner?
Keep it clean, that's what we had, there's no question raised.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So we're going to vote on each item separately with a roll called vote.
I'm quick. Council Capone.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council DePiero.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Matusky.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McLaughlin.
Yes.
Council Simonelli.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine yeze zero neze.
Passed item 13.
On item 14, Council Capone.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council DePiero.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Matusky.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McLaughlin.
Yes.
Council Simonelli.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine yeze zero neze.
Item number 15, Council Capone.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council DePiero.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Matusky.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McLaughlin.
Yes.
Council Simonelli.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine yeze zero neze, Mr. President.
You passed item 15.
Item 16, Council Capone.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council DePiero.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Matusky.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McLaughlin.
Yes.
Council Simonelli.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine yeze zero neze, Mr. President.
You passed the next one.
Item number 17, Council Capone.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council DePiero.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Matusky.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McLaughlin. Council Simonelli.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine yeze zero neze, Mr. President.
Passed item number 17.
Item number 21, Council Capone.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council DePiero.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Matusky.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McLaughlin. Council Simonelli.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine yeze zero neze, Mr. President.
Passed item number 21.
Item 22, Council Capone.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council DePiero.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Matusky.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McLaughlin. Council Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine yeze zero neze, Mr. President.
You passed item number 22.
Suspend the rules and take item number 18, 19, and 20?
Second motion. We have a motion to take item number 18, 19, and 20 collectively, second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Item number 18, Mr. President, is a...
Let him read it.
Petition for a new garage license for Eastern Salt Company at 201 Rover Street. Excuse me, that's a Flambles registration license for Eastern Salt at 201 Rover Street, 18. And 19 is a petition for a garage license for Eastern Salt Company at 201 Rover Street. And item 20 is a new repair license for Eastern Salt Company at 201 Rover Street. These are current licenses with a new company, they should be sent to CBD.
So moved on that motion, Mr. President. Thank you. Mr. President, some property has been recently sold in this area and if I may be mistaken, but it's the Farm of Boston Sand and Gravel area, okay?
This is the, this is the petition.
Is that where it is?
This is the same company.
It's this different name.
Different name, but the same property, excuse me.
Okay, here's my concern for the City of Everett. I'm not sure, but this is the Rock Salt Company that's located in Chelsea, right on the waterfront. That's underneath the tops as you go into East Boston to the left. That is there year-round, it's as high as a 20-story building and the Santa Claus there in the wintertime on the top, just in case anybody doesn't know where this is. This company has bought property in the City of Everett on our waterfront. Here we are trying to get rid of some of this, I won't say undesirable businesses, but the waterfront's becoming very important here in our community. I am not going to vote for any license for this rock salt pile to come to our community. They have a, they had a bad track record in Chelsea, Mr. President, because I know people that live near this thing that had to breathe this... We're getting rid of... We're getting rid of a lot of businesses that kind of outgrew their stay here in Everett. And now we're gonna have, and I'm pretty sure that they're gonna leave their location in Chelsea. I'm only surmising here, okay? I'm not exactly sure, but they're gonna develop where this, this company is located in Chelsea into condominiums and a beautiful view of, of the waterfront, which is our waterfront there in Chelsea, and they're gonna come to our city, and I'm not sure if we can do anything. They bought the property from, there again, I read something in the paper, fifteen million dollars for this property, but I'm not exactly sure. I want a lot of information before I vote on anything for this company to come to our community, where our future is boundless really in that area. You hear reports of the old Boston Edison chimneys coming down and possibly a hotel there. We just renewed Polerize New England. It's just a matter of time before these junk scrap metal businesses also leave, you know, and move to a more accommodating part of the state. We just voted for seven scrap metal companies, okay? They're there already, they're making a living and so forth, but they're not on the waterfront. Polerize is. But my issue here, Mr. President, and to members of the council, this area has been underutilized. This company had a bad track record. I know they've done some public relations in the past couple of years, but I know people that live in that area in Chelsea that breathe this salt in all the time, and they finally covered it correctly. However, we must be vigilant for the future of this city and this community. We got the casino not too far away from this area, and I'm quite concerned. So I'd like to lay these all on the table and have a representative of the Building Department. I can't be sold on this. Eastern Salt Company, I can't be sold on. I'm not gonna vote for any license for that company to come here. I don't know if I can do that. Personally, I'm not gonna vote for it, but...
It has to go to committee.
This should be a committee on the whole type of concern for us all, because we got the waterfront that's just coming to life, and this is really gonna put a, put a stop to that. So I guess my suggestion, Mr. President, would be to maybe possibly have a committee on the whole. Is it worthy of that? I think it is.
In the past, and this is what we've measured on this, is a license like this, we voted the public safety, you know, this is a model. At that point, that's when the discussion would be made with the city's experts and their request.
Can we invite everybody?
Committee, that would be the time for the body to discuss it.
Okay.
You know, a business can come in and, which you can, but you need always to be careful, obviously, you do not give them legal guidelines over rules. Anthony Coggins in that because he...
It'll be like another tank.
Send this to committee, let, let's take its first step there, and invite whoever you need in the city to be expert wise. So again, for legitimate reasons to do this, for, 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 we need to make sure we have all our ducks in a row.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion.
All right, well, I think that's a good suggestion. I think we'd like to send this to the...
Committee of the whole.
Community development.
Committee of the whole.
Committee of the whole?
Initials of CBD.
CPD.
Second the motion.
And invite, and we wanna, I wanna know what's going on down there, so who, community development office would know what's going on, no?
Or building. I would say building more than...
Building Department, Community Development, and, you know, I know it was Boston Sand and Gravel, so you, okay, they sold it to this company, so they may claim that, oh, it is sand and salt, so it's kind of similar, but...
Well, we don't really know what type of...
I have no clue what's going on. You know, this is what gets me.
We have a good idea what it is.
Yeah, this is what gets me. We're blindsided. If I didn't get the calendar and the city clerk didn't get this paperwork, we'd never know. I mean, we'd have, and guess who the big benefit is? And we just heard, Mr. President, about that covert, that the City of Chelsea wasn't willing to cooperate with us in doing the repair work that's necessary, rather than burdening the entire City of Everett over there. So Chelsea has to work with us a little. To dump this business here in Everett on the waterfront may be a very big hindrance to the development of that area, and I have concern about that. So I agree with you to the Community Development Committee.
Second.
Invite the principals and the city solicitor. I just want the board to know that their attorney was here tonight, and because we had such a large agenda, I told them that this would be going to committee. So I just want my colleagues to know that, okay? Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor McLaughlin. Mr. President, briefly, I would echo the comments of Counselor Matuski. I think this is a major issue that we need to look at, not I'm against or that I'm in favor, but I think we need to look at it. My only comment is that once it comes out of committee, I believe it should go in committee. Once it comes out of committee, I plan on making a recommendation that we send it then to committee of the whole, because I don't think we should discuss it on a council calendar on a regular Monday night. We should have another meeting that we can all come and discuss the future of this company, possibly or not possibly coming to the project. So I don't want anybody to be surprised that after committee, I'm gonna refer this to committee of the whole.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I agree, agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Matuski. This is not a good thing for the City of Everett, and to send this to the Committee on Community Development and then with planning to send it to the Committee of the Whole, why take that extra step? I wanna, I'm making a motion that we send it to the Committee of the Whole. I just wanna send it to the Committee of the Whole.
If I could, these three licenses do not spell out what their business plan is in the City of Everett.
That's right.
That's the purpose of these committees. So let's send this to committee and get your questions answered.
Who are the members of the Committee of the Whole, Mr. Chairman?
I didn't say the Committee of the Whole.
I'm sorry, who's the members of the Committee of Community Development?
Who members of the Committee of Development, please raise your hands.
One, two, three, close.
And I believe Counselor Mendels, and yourself.
Yeah. We're the only four that are gonna be asking questions.
Correct.
And these guys are the ones that wanna know, and they're not gonna be able to even come to the meeting.
Any business coming to the City, uh, City of Everett has the right to due process. Now, if you're gonna shut, if you're gonna cut that short and, and without any other particular information from them, you're leaving us open for our decisions to be overruled. Counselor Capone.
Maybe to, maybe to satisfy all concerns here, because, you know, first of all, we don't know exactly what it is that they want. So the first step is to listen to the petitioner. If it, if it comes that the petitioner is looking to do something on as large a scale as some of my colleagues think it is, maybe at that point in time in the committee, the recommendation would be to refer it to a committee of the whole.
Absolutely.
So that way we'll satisfy both purposes. We'll let the petitioners come in. They might be taking a whole different turn, but if it turns out that it is something that some of the members have expressed concern about, I, I'll, as a member of the committee, I'll make that motion if the time ever comes to refer it to a committee of the whole, and hopefully that'll satisfy the members.
That's the way, that's the route it should go. Just a quick question.
Please, Counselor Matuski.
Thank you. Did that man, you, Counsel woman suggested was here on this piece, did he make, did he sign in on the sign-in sheet? Well, how come we didn't bring him up?
Because we have forty-five cases on the agenda, and we're gonna make someone wait to...
Through the chair, please. Through the chair.
This is what I'm talking about, Mr. President. If I had known, this, this is important, I waited quite a while. I discussed this with a few councilmen before the meeting to see if they had any information, and they were unaware of what's going on. If I had known that that man that did the sign-in, and no offense to the counselor, I would have, you know, so, I, we could've got something answered here tonight at least, what the intentions were, but we don't have that opportunity now. But I agree with Councilman Hanlon. I want input on this, this, this project or whatever they're gonna do down there at some point, but I will go along with Counselor Capone's suggestion that at least we'll get it started. But if I had known he was here, this is the most important piece on the whole calendar to me, and I just wanna let you know that, that you should take a glance at that cal, that agenda, who signs in, because I didn't get a chance to talk to you, but I talked to Counselor Capone earlier in the meeting and...
Where we go with this? Let me call this somewhere.
Oh, just the point that I'm trying to make here, that we would've had some information, now we have none. So that, that was, that's not my, tell somebody to go home is not...
That's been the process for a couple of years.
Tell somebody to go home is not where I'm at here.
One person's got the floor, please. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will go along with the Community Development Proposal Committee and go from there, and then the Committee of the Whole, but I will speak on this project. I'm not, if it's what I think it is, I am no way in favor of this. I wanna be on record as opposed to this rock salt joint coming to our city with extra trucks, and I wanna know who's working for that company, if anybody in this council has family working there, too. That's another thing I'd like to know. You can't vote on this if you're working there. That's another thing, and I'm gonna start that whole angle here, too, because I've heard some information tonight that that might be the case, so...
What's the motion now?
My motion, I seconded Counselor Capone's motion.
All right, Counselor DePiero has the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the, the root of my frustration at the majority of these meetings. I mean, we make a motion to send something to committee, why does debate proceed for another ten, twenty minutes? I get it, everyone has a piece to say, and I respect everyone here's opinion, but you get to a point where you're beating the hell out of a piece when it's going to committee. Why are we sitting here? I'm sorry, but it's ridiculous.
Just as the point, Mr. President, if I may, I didn't know that somebody was here for this company. It's a tell, a councilman to tell them to go home, uh, because it's a long agenda, well, you'll have to sit in the chamber here.
No, the, the, if I could, I'll respond to that. The thing is that the, our track record normally is, renewals we discuss here, new licenses go to committee. They have to go to committee. We need to screen these and get the information, so we're making a vote based on facts, not on, on speculation.
We do have some information.
So I agree with you to a degree, up to a certain point, but again, we need to, we need to follow the process that we've already established in our rules, which is, this is a new license, they go before committee, the committee makes the recommendations. Now, if that recommendation may be to come before the committee of the whole, then that's fine, but let's be careful not to go down a road that allows them to take us to litigation and reverse our decisions. Okay, we don't have all the facts, let's get this to committee. That would be, again, so we have a motion now to send this to Community Development, it's been seconded.
This is only to protect the taxpayers against...
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. We have to do things legal in here.
Counsel, Counselor Hanlon.
Do we invite the petitioners?
Absolutely.
The principal and the city solicitor.
Solicitor and ISD.
Yes.
I heard the city solicitor, I didn't hear about it.
And the principals of the company.
And the ISD director also was, was in this.
I would also recommend that the ISD director...
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to send this to Community Development with the, the principals, the city solicitor, and ISD. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Just on eighteen, I wanna refer them all. On nineteen, would you like to make the same motion?
Yeah, eighteen, nineteen.
We have a motion to send eighteen, nineteen, and twenty to committee. Also invite the, the principals.
The principals of, uh...
City Solicitor and ISD. All in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
I believe on item twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
I have something to say on that.
Clerk will read item number twenty-six.
Item number twenty-six is an order offered by Counselor Peter Anapolitano, who is president, National Grid requesting permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures, along and across the following public way, McKinley Street, National Grid to install one SO pole, on McKinley Street, National Grid to install, install one SO pole owned Guy Stub Pole at number two zero five six dash one, and Anchor Guy Pole. This is no action necessary, it was on tonight's, um, agenda, and it wasn't supposed to be here, so no action necessary.
Accept communication, place on file. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number thirty-two. Right. Item number thirty-two, Mr. President, is an ordinance offered by Counselor Michael K. Marchese to amend the awning ordinance to color to include a black awning.
Uh, do we have an awning?
We created one.
We created one.
So myself and the, I, that was what I gave you this evening.
Yeah, I have it, okay.
That is a brand-new ordinance. We now have an ordinance.
Now, do we have to amend this to accept black, or is it already included?
It is already included in, in the ordinance. It, it ties in much of the rules.
Yep.
It goes above and beyond what the rules have.
Yep.
We will eventually, with Counselor Capone as chair of the, the other committee, we're committee, we're working on, you know, condensing the rules like they're doing.
Because I read that we have the two colors, all the different sizes, everything.
The colors. It also, I mean, there's many things that we did to amend it. Yeah, I gave everyone a copy. So just very, very briefly, we changed it from 12 inches to any, to any, any amount of space over the public way. You need a permit, unless it's a banner, anything that could potentially hurt people. We got rid of the $5,000 bond. We now make you get, be, make the city a part of the insurance up to, at a $1 million policy you have to have, because God forbid someone gets hit with this awning even in the future, before we weren't carrying the bond forward. Now, the license will be carried. So my office will have more responsibility, and this is a much better, it's an ordinance now, so it has some teeth. So you can either refer this to a committee to discuss it, so you can read it, or you can enroll it this evening and go for endowment later. That is up to you.
I'd go for table action if somebody had something else. Do you lay on the table for two weeks, everybody read it and make a decision?
Whatever you'd like to do.
The motion?
Postpone.
Postpone for two weeks so everybody can read up on it and call for a vote then, okay? Please, all these ones, I'm going to send them places. I don't know, I don't think it's, it's up to Taylor Hoses now. But it has that piece, it has black already in the ordinance.
We have a motion to postpone this till the next meeting. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 33.
Item number 23. Did you say 23, Mr. President?
33.
Oh, thank you, I was sorry.
Yeah.
That were a rough one. Mr. President, there's a resolution offered by Counselor Michael K. Marchese that a member of the Historical Commission appear to answer questions regarding their duties and responsibilities.
First of all, do we have an historical?
Yes, they fall under, obviously, the mayor and actually myself.
Yep. Now, do they have any power to do anything?
I did, I know I handed you two things. One is the state law, and one is the Administrative Code. They do have authority. Don't forget, this is a fairly new board. We didn't have a Historical Commission for some time. We've revamped it. I believe they, and I don't want to quote, but we may be adding our unofficial historian, Michael Manarato, to the board, so there'll be some, someone with some extensive knowledge. And the board itself is amazing. They've been working a lot to understand the history, and they're working with outside consultants from the state to do a new register. So they are in the process of working on this. It is comprehensive, because it's been so long since it's been done. 1970s was the last time we did this. So they're taking on a large undertaking. St. Teresa's Church is one of the ones we're meeting this Thursday, because they want to keep part of that. So they are actively involved, and they'll be more and more actively involved.
Okay, my issue is, and whoever gets offended, I don't care, that house that was ripped down by the power line. That house was as old as probably the city of Everett was. And that's not the way to respect the city of Everett. If the city of Everett is going to be protected and look like the city of Everett with updates, if someone said, okay, I'm going to leave that house and put 10 units on the back, it wouldn't have bothered me. But just the idea that there's going to be something, it's the start of something not good. Lower Broadway, I understand it's going to be no. The people who sell in the houses, the old houses, they don't seem, you know, to bother them out there, and they're moving on. But that kind of hurt. That's in the middle of Broadway Everett, and I don't want to see the future of Everett looking like that. I'm one. I mean, I think you can work what exists, that if we have to budget a little bit more and let people add on to it, but keep the facade and keep the lines we had on Broadway, that bothered me. It's a shame that it got torn down. And I can't see how anybody who's in the Historical Society would say, oh, yeah, just tear it down. The house wasn't falling down. Dr. Movilio, sure. And that house is probably as old as the history of Everett is. And I'd like to see the city at least dignify the properties that are on Broadway when you drive through here. It doesn't look like every other place, and that's, you know, that's what I would hope the Historical Society does.
And they will. I just hope you understand that some things just...
We missed that fastball, I'll tell you that.
Councilman DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Counselor Marchese. If anybody knows, I have a house that was built in 1860, and I restored every angle, every, in and out. The only problem is, when you restore an old home, it costs a lot of money. Historic is not just, if you're going to do a Historic Committee, you have to go by the other cities and towns, because they make you pick the paint colors, do this, but they also help with the expense. I, to restore an old home in the city of Everett would cost you well over $1 million right now. And that's no lie. I'm not even throwing figures out there. I know, because I did it. So it can't be just a Historic Committee coming together saying, you can't do this with your house. It's my money, I'll do whatever I want with my house. If I want to tear it down, I'm going to tear it down. So what are they going to do to help the people keep it historic? Most of the historic homes in Everett have a lumen sided on them. They've already been destroyed. So I think they have to go into other cities and find out what Historic Committees really do in other cities. All right, thank you.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I echo the comments of Counselor DeFlorio. Most of these parcels that are built 100-plus years ago, you can't do anything with them. Their zoning is so outdated, the zoning what was there 100 years ago and today's zoning, it's apples and oranges. You can't compare them. So if you wanted to develop sites and you want to bring new growth and new development into your community, unfortunately, sometimes you're going to have to lose some historical sites, because they just can't conform to the codes and the zoning of today's standards. I was just wondering if there is such a set of laws, regulations in place now from the Historical Commission. I don't know if our clerk knows that, but I've heard this example in the past, that this property on Broadway shouldn't have been ripped down. If there's nothing on the books, and there's no set of guidelines, then there's nothing to follow. Then we can't talk about the past merged into the future. So, Mr. Clerk, is there a set of rules or regulations currently on the books for the city?
So state law dictates that once we accept a chapter, and we did, on April 20th of 1976, we accepted a Historical Commission. They are allowed, in general authority, a lot of scope, they are allowed to state historic properties of archaeological value. They shall cooperate with the state archaeologists in conducting researchers of surveys, and so on and so forth. There is, are you asking, do our committee right now have a structure of rules?
Correct.
They only follow the state law. They, along with myself, are working on building...
But currently, today, there is no...
There are historical sites, though. We do have well over 100. I have the list in my office that were done in 1970s, and we are updating them again, because most of those properties are there. But they have been sited.
Stay focused on the item, please.
Things have been done to it. But that doesn't mean they're completely gone, because if you bring them back, take the siding off, they're still considered historical. And our intent, and the intent of the board down the road, is to stop making it, especially for some of the older properties similar to like Salem and stuff, to put those plaques on it. You know, we have historic mayors that have lived there, and governors, and et cetera, you know, Lieutenant Governor that came from Everett, and things like that. So we are trying to do that. And I say "we," the board. They fall a little bit under my scope, but we are working together to do it. The board is really working hard. There are things that might be missed at the moment, but there's a new board. They are working diligently to try to get on track, and they've been great. I have nothing bad to say. They're an amazing group. They're working hard. They meet at least once, maybe twice a month, and they're moving the city forward with our history. So nothing currently on the books, but they will be soon.
And I appreciate that answer. It shows the term, there's nothing on the books. So that home on Broadway could not have been given jurisdiction or guidelines for something that doesn't exist.
If it fell under the historical...
But it didn't.
I don't know that it didn't. I can't tell you off the top of my head, it's well over 100. And I don't know, but if it did, they could have petitioned to the state archaeologist, so I'm not sure.
If I could from the chair, okay, I understand the both parties here. And again, there should be some kind of structure to be able to protect our history. Look, you don't know where you're going if you don't know where you came from. Chelsea is a good example. Chelsea clock, that building there. Chelsea had no provision to protect that building. There was discussions about development going back there, and apartment building there. They were going to keep the front structure. The developer didn't get their way on certain conditions. They tore the whole building down. Chelsea clocks are used internationally, okay? I remember seeing them on ships when I was in the Navy. I've seen them on aircraft. I remember seeing them overseas. So the thing is, this is just a good example. The point, the spirit of this is, we need to protect our past. Now, we're not saying that, you know, to protect your house, if you've got a historical, you're going to have to spend a million dollars. But I understand the spirit of this, and in that respect, I mean, look, 15 years ago, I put that the school administration building, being the last wooden structure school in the city of Everett, be preserved as a historical site. It's not, doesn't qualify at this point because of the renovations made to it to make it functional. But the building still exists. And this, and I think that's the only spirit here. So let's, before it gets too much later, let's make a decision. Where is this going? How do we proceed? Counselor Marchese, please.
I guess we may be a meeting to sit down with the Historical and get things. Maybe invite them up here, or maybe you could take them to a commute, a meeting. Maybe in a meeting would be better.
Perhaps referring it to Community Development?
Community Development.
Community issue start there.
It could go... Second motion, be fit, be fit to Community Development. Historic Committee, and obviously whoever wants to come from that department there. The department head would be great.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Clerk will read item number 34.
Yes, 34. Mr. President, there's a resolution offered by Counselor Michael K. Marchese that the Traffic Commission, DPW, considers some public safety measures for Nickel Street and Union Street onto Ferry Street, that all stop lines be recessed back 10 feet in the interest of public safety.
Anybody who's driven on those streets, Nichols or Union, coming up towards Ferry Street, has to know that you need 10 more feet to make a turn there. And that's all. We can send this right to Traffic, and hopefully they'll acknowledge it when they do the street over, or they repaint it.
Okay.
I'll go to meeting.
We have a motion to send item 34 to Traffic. For the second, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 36. Only nine more items to go there.
Item number 36, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Michael K. Marchese to inquire as to the new hours of operations for Walgreens on Broadway.
Counselor Marchese.
I know Walgreens is moving down. As we know, the good news is, they actually shut down from 6 to 12 to 6 in Glendale Square now. Yeah. So after we got that resolved, we got rid of that problem, some genius let them open up a nightclub over at the old club that we had all the problems. The upstairs, where there used to be shooters.
That's actually a hookah bar.
Yeah, hookah bar, that's great. We don't have enough problems down there. Now, we have 300 people with hookah bars upstairs. This is just incredible, the city. But if we could just write a letter to them and ask them what their hours will be at the, when they do take over the Broadway store. Not on Broadway, Rite Aid. I heard they bought that.
Eight to 10, my new neighbors.
And they'll stay that way?
I call them all the time, eight to 10. That's their current hours now.
Who knows what happens when they turn into Walgreens?
But they'd have to come, I believe, under our ordinances, we issue the licenses, unless they fall under something else, so we'd have to...
Who knows what they have originally down there? They could have 24-hour licenses down there.
They've opened past 10 or 11, so they'd have to come before us, I believe. But I have to look into that.
The motion would be to send a letter, response from Walgreens, what their hours are.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Hours on Broadway, yep.
Right, it's...
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 37.
Item number 37, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor John Leo McKinnon that the contractor will repair the sidewalk at 48 Woodland Ave, replace the hot top with concrete, and fix the crack in the sidewalk next to it.
Counselor McKinnon.
Can we send this to Greg St. Louis, our engineer, and have a response back with this next meeting? Due to the fact that I've had numerous calls on this, and it actually, I went down there, it looks like crap, so...
Please have a response back. The Director Engineering?
No, not personally.
Response back at our next meeting?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 39.
Item number 39, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Stephen Semenelli to request Mr. O'Donnell appear at the next Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service Committee to update on the opening of Air Force Road with regard to traffic and public safety issues.
Counselor Semenelli.
Go to Mayor's Office, please.
We have a motion to refer item number 39 to the Mayor's Office. One second. Actually, the resolution is to have Chief of Staff go to the Government Operations.
Public Service Committee?
Public Safety. Okay, so we have a motion to send item number 39 to committee. Is that correct, Councilman?
Yes.
Okay, send it to...
Not the mayor.
Not the mayor.
Public Safety.
Here at the next Government Operations meeting. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 40.
Item number 40, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor John Leo McKinnon, a resolution requesting an official historian for the city of Everett.
Counselor McKinnon.
Could we send this to the Mayor's Office and have a response back in the second meeting of June? And also, you know what? Yeah. Do you want that at the Historical? Where are they going with that? All right, we'll send that to Committee on Community Development.
Counselman Hamlin?
That's okay, thank you.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 41.
Item number 41, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Fred Capone that a representative from the Mayor's Office and Community Development appear at our next council meeting to provide an update on Florence Street Park project.
Councilman Matusky. Oh, one second, I apologize. Sorry, it's hand up first. It's your piece. I do apologize. Just like all of you, I'm starting to get punchy. Councilman Capone, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know my colleague shares my frustration of the park. I mean, this is, it's going on four years. I think this was the first park that was started. It's going to be the last one to be completed. You look around the city, and you see all these parks have gone to fruition. We've got Mini Fenway Park. We can't finish a park on Florence Street. It's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. What's more concerning to me is throughout this entire project, the park has been exposed to all kinds of risks to kids. Right now, there are cement formations that are in different spots. There's a large piece of wood that's just laying there. It's not, it's not completed. It is amazing to me, kids haven't gotten hurt. You had, you had, you had construction equipment that was there, open, open pits. This is absolutely ridiculous. Now, in all fairness, Tony Susa did try to reach me on Thursday. Unfortunately, we weren't able to touch base. But we've got to bring this project to conclusion. The people in that neighborhood have not had a full-fledged park for a long, long time. Yeah, I, you know, it's insane. You know, and the reality is, you know, we're sitting here, I think we need to talk to our city solicitor to see what's in this contract. I think we're at the point where we need to get some money back. I, okay. So what I'd like to do is, I, well, if other colleagues want to speak on it, but my hope is, because I know it concerns all of us, so I don't want to put it in the committee. If everyone's okay with it, I'd like to have it at our next meeting. I'd like to have somebody from Community Development, somebody from the Mayor's Office, and the city solicitor appear. Well, I think, I think if we have the contractor up here, it might become a little bit too contested. I'd like to hear internally what we can do. So I'd like to have someone from the Mayor's Office, Community Development, and the city solicitor here, so we can discuss the project, where it's going, what our recourse as a city is, because it's ridiculous.
Absolutely. I mean, from the chair, the city clerk will agree, would, can confirm this. Two weeks ago, I was in his office. Community Development came in and started telling me one of the other parks. And I told him flat out, I'm not interested in what's going on in the other parks until I know what's going on with Florence Street Park. When is it going to open? I couldn't get a date then. That was two weeks ago. So I completely, I fully agree. You know, three of us in this room have represented that area for years, and this is just ridiculous. We've lost a park in Ward 1 due to the line going to the construction down on Lower Broadway. Now, our principal playground in Ward 1 is still taking four years to be finished.
Four years.
This on Saturday.
I'll be brief, by the way, Mr. President.
Come here.
I'll be brief.
Please, by all means.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Councilman Capone, the Ward Councilman. And, you know, it was, it was stated up here in this chamber that mature trees would be planted. The trees that I see are not mature. They're small trees. 10 years from now, they'll look like they could cover some shade. I mean, this, and now I came to, I found out there was some issues with frozen sprinkler systems and so forth. You know, and it's, it's a little over the top. You look at Sacramone Park, as you, the members stated earlier, it's beautiful. We got our money's worth. This has been a ripoff, as far as I'm concerned, for the neighborhood. And the park didn't get done, but it does look good. It does look good, Mr. President. But it's, it can't be, I liked it the way it was, to be honest with you. Needed some new grass. The trees were nice. You had pine trees that had some maturity to them. You could sit on a bench and get some shade. This is the Mojave Desert. This is, I can imagine when it's 90 degrees out, sitting on a, I mean, the fountain better work, I can tell you that much. But, no, really, it's over the top now. You know, I realize certain contractors have problems now and then, but it's really not fair to the community. And Counselor Marchese is going to be sponsoring a piece that I'll let him discuss, but I agree with him 100%. This is over the top, and, you know, everybody deserves a break, but if you can't complete a project, you know, I was in the construction field, and I, there are consequences when you don't finish things on time and do it right. So, you know, I agree with the Councilman's intent here. Whatever you want to do, I'm going to vote for it, make sure this project gets started. But I don't see any mature trees. I just want to make sure that you understand that that was a guarantee up here, that mature trees would be included. I don't, to me, a mature tree is something that gives you some shade. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Could you please, please repeat your motion.
We're going to postpone till the next meeting, invite somebody from Community Development, someone from the Mayor's Office, and the city solicitor. And we'd like to know what we've expended on the project to date, and if there's any outstanding amount that's due to the contractor.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 42.
Excuse me. Item number 42, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselors Michael McLaughlin and Counselor Fred Capone that is honor the mayor and the CFO, Eric Demas, attend the next Ways and Means Committee meeting to discuss funding for the 2018 Homecoming Parade and anticipated plans for it.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I know that I have learned tonight that there is some ongoing discussions. I do want to just clarify and clarify one thing that frustrated me deeply with this. One of the local news reporters reported that the School Finance Committee had some influence or some say or opinion on homecoming. Absolutely, under no circumstance could I imagine that the members of the School Finance Committee would strike out the homecoming. That is absolutely ridiculous and almost laughable, to be honest. Although I would like to hear, I think that they may have got some information, and that's why I'm going to ask for this to go to committee or to be table for two weeks, to invite up the parties that are respectfully involved, so that we can understand. You can't put a price tag in community spirit, and I think we would all agree with that, of some sort. What that some sort is, is open for discussion. But I think it's a day that we all participated in for multiple events throughout the day. So I'd like this to either be laid on the table for two weeks, or go to committee, suggestion of my colleagues is fine with me, but I'd like to hear what the mayor has in mind for plans. And I'd also like to see if there's a way to do some private funding. I know the Bunkershill Associates in Charlestown, they put on a beautiful day every June. It's totally paid for private funding. They do fundraising throughout the year, and they pay for their community spirited day through private funds. I'd like to see if that's ever been looked at, or if that's an option. So I'm going to yield the floor to my colleagues and see where they want to go with this piece.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yeah, that report that was in the paper was totally wrong. So there was never, no mention of any type of fundings being, we didn't even, it was never even brought up at our table. So I know that there was other things...
So I know that there was other things that were mentioned that Councilman DePiero or Councilman Hamlin could bring up, but there was no mention of the homecoming parade being touched. There was no mention of that at all. So I don't know where this article came from, but there was certain members that were involved with it in that article. They mentioned different names, you know, so I don't know, I don't understand why that happened that way, but it should have never went down that way. And, you know, there was no mention of never having a homecoming day parade or taking the $250,000, that supposedly that's what it costs, off the table. There was a name mentioned in there, so I was just taken aback by it. But we mentioned it in the committee, and we're moving forward because we have to do some work in that committee. And there's a slippery slope on both sides here, it's like a one-way street. Not everybody's gonna be happy with that, what comes out of that committee, so I can probably assure you of that.
All right.
That's it.
Councilor DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to, you know, echo off of what some of my colleagues said, to clarify exactly how this homecoming situation happened. When we had the school budget fiasco a few months ago, a couple of days following, the superintendent's office reached out to the Mayor's office and said, with the budget issues, they didn't feel it was so appropriate to have a parade and that, you know, they'd make do fireworks the night before and a barbecue in collaboration with the city and have the football game on a Saturday. Whatever the plans would be, was still being worked out. The school department requested $0 for homecoming. The Councilor McKinnon said it had nothing to do with the school finance commission. I'm not accusing any of my colleagues of saying that, just for the record of what some of the local press was saying. The school department requested $0, and I implore my colleagues, if the press reaches out to you, reach out to a member of the school finance review commission instead of, you know, speaking to the press right away. Reach out to us, we're at that table. We'll give you the direct answer of exactly how these things happen. And that's all I have to say.
Councilor DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to know where the $100,000 came in. Where did that figure come in?
That was, it was in the school budget.
And the parade cost $100,000?
$121,000 last year.
If I could, from the chair, then this one item is a prime example. Don't put pieces on the agenda based on what you read in the newspaper. Go to the departments, get some facts to base your resolution on, because otherwise, you know, you're playing into somebody else's agenda. And that's not good for us, it's not good for the city. That's how rumors start. Councilor McLaughlin.
Mr. President, on the motion, the facts are the facts, that the budget has $0 in a line item for homecoming. That's a fact.
Okay, tell me what page that is on which budget? We don't have the budget yet.
The budget that's in front of me tonight.
And the school department budget is in there?
The budget that's in front of me tonight.
Is the school department budget in there?
The budget that has been proposed for this coming year has $0.
Which we just received tonight. So how is this on the agenda from last Thursday?
We know that the school department has funded $0 for the homecoming. Is that a debate? Seriously? Because I know it's getting late and temp is again high, but that's not for debate.
We heard assurances tonight from the CFO that there has been no discussion with cutting homecoming. Craft your questions and your resolution based on the information you have, not what you read on the newspaper. Well, you can disagree, but that doesn't make it, that doesn't mean I'm wrong. Okay, so what's the motion on item number forty-two?
Do you want to send it there, Senator?
You have a motion to send this to... You have a motion to send this to committee? Do I have a second? Community Development, Mayor...
It's going to Ways and Means.
Mr. President?
Excuse me, one second. Ways and Means. Okay, so let's do this official, because we're losing track of this. Is there a motion to send this to Ways and Means?
No.
You're making a motion to send this to Ways and Means. Is there a second?
On the Ways and Means?
Yes.
No second.
Okay, all in favor?
No.
Opposed?
Aye.
Say, clerk, chairs in doubt, clerk will read the roll.
Yea, as to what, send it to Ways and Means, no as to not. Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio? Councilor DePiero?
No.
Councilor Hamlin? Councilor Marchesi?
Yes.
Councilor Matusky?
No.
Councilor McKinnon?
No.
Councilor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Seminelli?
No.
And President Napolitano?
No.
That would be three yea's, seven nays. It is not passed, so...
That's right.
So it's still on the table.
Okay, what's your pleasure? Councilor McKinnon.
And this has nothing to do with the homecoming parade. It was not discussed at that committee level at all. So to say if you don't want to have homecoming, don't have homecoming, that's, you shouldn't be saying that.
I'm sure the money will pay somewhere.
We should not be saying this. We as a body, I'm seriously, on this one right here, I'm serious. We have, we've been putting our time in down the hallway here, us three, right here. Me, Mr. Hamlin, and Mr. DePiero. I'm not gonna sit here and have this discussed like we're not saying what's going on down there. This right now, it's not going to Ways and Means, that's for sure. We just took a vote on it.
Well, where do you want it?
Well, don't...
Refer it back to sponsor.
Refer it back to sponsor.
Second to motion.
That's where it should go. And then we can discuss it later.
Councilor McKinnon has the floor until he relinquishes it. Please continue.
I urge my colleague, send it back to sponsor, then we can discuss it after. If he has any questions, then we can discuss it after. But this is not even in effect from our side. This is something that if the school committee is requesting $0, go see the school committee. If they're requesting $0, go see the school committee.
Go see the mayor and see what he wants to do about it.
Councilor McLaughlin.
We know what we want to do about it. There was, we, excuse me, sir.
You still have the floor.
Thank you. But what we have done is, there was talks, ongoing talks about fireworks, ongoing talks about a barbecue, ongoing talks in conjunction with each other. They were gonna do a celebration of some sort and then have the game. So that's what this is gonna come down to. But to say that we don't want the parade, that's, it's not where it's at. And the budget should spell that out for us, where the zero effect came from, where the $250 went, and all that. So we don't need to go into committee of Ways and Means to figure this out.
Councilor DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I totally understand my colleagues' sentiments. I do think that Councilor McLaughlin, the spirit of it was a positive one. He wants to try to keep community relations, you know, homecoming, et cetera. We do have a lot of issues on the table financially. Rather than refer back to sponsor, if my colleagues are okay with it, maybe we send it down to the Mayor's office and see if he has any thoughts on what we can do for some sort of community collaboration. In, because we found out tonight that there is no funding for it. So maybe there's a backup plan, we can figure out something to do, just to see what he has to say, and then that way we can go from there.
Are you putting that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, refer it to the Mayor's office with the...
Just for clarification, there is a motion already on, so he would have to relinquish. There was a motion and seconded by Council... No, no, it wasn't, but there was...
Which motion?
And to refer it back, and Councilor Matusky...
Okay.
So I just want, there is a motion that was made and seconded, so unless they rescind it, that has to go first. I just wanted to clarify for you, Mr. President.
Right now, we have a motion, it's been seconded, to refer back to sponsor. We have a motion to send this to the Mayor's office for a response in two weeks, three weeks. This would be the one. Do I have a second for the motion to send it to the Mayor's office?
Actually, the first motion to refer it back and to the Mayor would be the same motion. Same, they have no, neither has precedence over the other. This isn't a committee. So you send it, the refer back goes first, parliamentary-wise, because it's in essence the same, correct?
All right, so we have a motion to send it back to sponsor, refer it back to sponsor, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, roll call vote.
Okay, yes to refer it back to sponsor, no does not. Councilor Capone?
No.
Councilor DeFlorio? Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Hamlin? Councilor Marchesi? Councilor Matusky?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor McLaughlin?
No.
Councilor Seminelli?
Yes.
Councilor Napolitano?
Yes.
And Councilor Marchesi?
Yes.
Press, prevail on that.
Seven yea's, three nays, you have referred back to sponsor. Sorry, the clerk had a question. Counselor, Mr. President. Item number forty-three is a resolution offered by Councilor Rosa DeFlorio that the police department places a speed trap at 95 Linden Street and monitor that area for excessive speeding.
Councilor DeFlorio.
If you could please send that to the traffic committee. Unfortunately, I've had a lot, numerous complaints on speeding. That's the only reason why it's on the agenda, and if they could please monitor the street, I would appreciate it.
You want me to refer to Christopher Hanlon?
Refer to the traffic.
Traffic Office.
Traffic, right? Thank you.
Give a motion and second it to send this to traffic. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number forty-four.
Item number forty-four. Mr. President, there's a resolution offered by Councilor Wayne Matusky that a representative of National Grid appears to explain the option for electrical supplies to homeowners in Everett.
Councilor Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recently, I've been kinda confused about these electrical companies coming door-to-door. Police, so I'm reading the Globe the other day. Attorney General Mara Haley made her case to the legislature on Tuesday arguing that the State House Committee that people who are signing up for these discount energy, for electricity, are actually paying more down the road, you know, it's very confusing Mr. Cameron, who was here this evening on another piece of business, I actually got to speak with him tonight as he was leaving the building, and he has informed me that he will come and actually explain some of this. But as we all know, these door-to-door salesmen, they're calling on the phone, there's a lot of lonely hearts out there, well, there are some lonely hearts that are looking for company, and they'll come to your house, once you sign that piece of paper, you lose National Grid, and you sign up to some company that's supposed to get you a reduced rate, then you get letters in the mail saying you're using more electricity than everybody in the whole country. It's just over the top. And according to this article, overcharges of $176 million for higher utility bills for homeowners. Although, Mr. Cameron did say that companies actually save money because they can spend more to bid on the energy kilowatts and so forth. It's all a little confusing to me. So he said he'd be nice enough to come up here and explain this, but I just want to do a warning to anybody, because they're out there every, they've been in my neighborhood, I don't know how many times over the years. My father, actually, before he passed away three years ago, signed up for direct energy or whatever the heck it was, and his electricity bill doubled. I said, what is this? He said, oh, some guy came by, thought it was an electric company, in good intentions, but you know something, it's a ripoff because they deregulated the industry, and it's very confusing to me. I have no clue who I'm paying at this point. National Grid sends the bill, but if you read it, your provider is somebody else. This is so, and the Attorney General is actually trying to get to the bottom of it, and they may stop the whole project altogether, but, you know, I just want the general public in Everett to know, don't sign anything until you know what you're signing. And they're sheer modest, they're usually younger people, they have a tag around their neck, they go door-to-door, and they have a convincing story to tell you that you're gonna save money. Everybody wants to save money, but guess what? It's doubling some people's electricity bill. So I, you know, I just want to lay this over and Mr. Cameron be invited, Mr. Clerk and Mr. President. Thank you, I know it's the last piece of business, but...
Next to last.
Oh, next to last.
Don't go away.
I'd like to add the entire city council, if that's okay? And I want to thank my colleagues for their indulgence, and, Mr. President, you've been very fair with me this evening, thank you.
All right, so make it official. We have a motion.
Could I make that?
We have a motion to put, to have everybody on the council on this. It's been, well, he made the motion, seconded. On the motion, Councilor Hamlin?
Not on putting everybody on it, but I just want to explain something about the cost of this electricity. We have several different companies out there. There are some companies that buy electricity from the electric company, a lot of it, okay? It's only on paper, and what they do is they resell it to the homeowner, and you do get a break. There are some companies out there that will give you, I know all this now, that are gonna give you that break, but then they charge you a fee on top of it, so you wind up paying more. And then there are some companies out there that are selling clean power, and you pay for that through the nose.
Nose, yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, you're supposed to be saying, well, I'm a good person, I'll take the clean power for the thing. So you gotta be very careful, like you said, you gotta be very, very careful with what you're doing, and don't sign anybody until you have, Councilor Capone, but you need a lawyer, honest to goodness. I just wanted to say that, that's all I care.
He doesn't want to kick her. Find her feet.
So was it going, was it...
All right, so what's the, the motion right now is to invite...
Invite Mr. Cameron, National Grid, to try to explain...
These fees, yeah.
We have it at the next meeting.
Invite him to the next meeting.
It's our meeting, yeah.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number forty-five. I'll take a break.
A few, counsel, make it short. We'll get it. Oh, well, it's another happen.
The final agenda item, number forty-five. Mr. President, there's a resolution offered by Councilor Michael McLaughlin and Councilor Fred Capone that National Grid updates the Everett City Council as to the causes of the various power outages that have occurred recently in the Lower Broadway and Gateway Mall areas.
Councilman McLaughlin.
As for this to be tabled for two weeks, seeing that Mr. Cameron is going to come up, regarding item number forty-four, we could have him discuss this at the same time.
Postpone.
The wish of my colleagues is before me.
Would you like to inform him that you want him to discuss the Lower Broadway?
I have spoken to him. He is aware that I was going to send this to Public Utilities Committee to discuss this, but seeing that he's going to come for the piece that's before us at the same time, we could discuss this item as well. There has been a recent, several outages in the last week that was actually a big one, the Gateway Mall was severely involved for quite a bit of the day, so he's gonna come and discuss this.
I think it's a good idea, but I would advise to send it as an invitation. Don't assume that he's gonna, because he's gonna be here for one item, that he's gonna be able to answer for something. Send an invitation, and he's being invited to speak on two particular items. He'll have all his details that way.
Yep, and I respect that. Thanks, Mr. President. Before we can do so, I'd ask the invitation be sent. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to send item number forty-five to Mr. Cameron, invite him to attend our next meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Before we adjourn, before we adjourn, I'm gonna ask each member to see me after the meeting. Okay, I'll discuss, okay, it's regarding our retiring, let's say, date, so everybody see me after the meeting. We have a motion for, we have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Too late.
The ayes have it.
They don't want to stay?